I'll struggle.
Welcome to our meeting. The date is August 20, 2024. The time is 6:00 P. M. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. I ask that you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza will be absent. Councilmember Kaczynski-
Present.
Councilmember Hossi-
Present.
Councilmember Sheard-
Present.
Councilmember Pollak-
Present.
Councilmember Fitzki will be absent. Council President Stelk-
Here.
Councilmember Nickerson-
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair will be absent. Councilmember Conley-
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, the city administrator, Laura McAlune is absent this evening, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator is present, as is Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, Keith Kurtz, the public works director, and Matthew Gleason, the finance director. We will proceed with our agenda, starting with item 4A, fiscal year 2025, Parks and Recreation Budget Proposal. Mr. McCoy?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Okay, so we are going to get right into it. So the Parks and Recreation budget that we're proposing this year includes park administration, parks operations, the greenhouse, the cemetery, the recreation division, the summer programs, the Staley Railway, the community fieldhouse, Island Oasis, and Lincoln Pool. I'm just going to go through each slide here, and if there's any questions, feel free to turn on your lights, and I'll try to answer those questions. So we're projecting our personnel service services this year to be a total of $3,588,148, which is an increase of 6.4%. One thing that you, to note, we do get affected maybe a little more heavily than other departments from the minimum wage increase. This year, the minimum wage was $12. We have, we have increased our seasonal wages to account for the new minimum wage, which will be $13.50 in 2025, and then we anticipate bumping that again to $15. The minimum wage is $15 in 2026. So, again, increase of 6.4%. The operating that we're projecting this year is $1,358,509 of an increase of 3.6%. This does not include a requested FTE. It does not include budget for Jack Rabbit Win and Golf Course or Heartland Public Shooting Park. There will be presentations next. It does include our operating line item there, does include a new item of $22,000 just to, for the upkeep of Camp Augustine. And going back to our seasonals, one, just a note, you might be amazed to hear that we had, working between the, the fieldhouse, the water park, the, you know, Staley Railway, some of our summer programs, we had 187 seasonal staff this year. So, again, you can see how we're affected by that minimum wage increase. Again, it does not include a FTE that we requested, just to keep up with the growth of the park system and our operations. So we've been really busy. If you've been driving around town and been into our parks, you will see that we've completed quite a few projects lately. The George Park and Ryder Park restrooms have been completed, so there's new restrooms in those parks. The Ryder Park parking lots, of course, the Purney Playground. We did a new irrigation system at Staley Park this year. We had put a backstop into Sterling Park. We had two new picnic shelters there by the Purney Playground that we installed this year. The George Park, we just did a field renovation of the, the large baseball field there. We have new playgrounds at Lincoln and Grace Abbott Park this year, and the Staley Park roads and parking lot improvements, that Phase 1 was completed this year. And again, super busy. I just, I think this is the time to introduce some of our staff. I'd just like to point out Barry Burrows is our park superintendent, and Mark Sands is our cemetery superintendent, and Jeremy Bachman is our recreation superintendent, who takes care of the swimming pools and some of our summer programs and sports programs. Those guys are here, and they're here for any questions you might have about any of our operations or some of our, our facilities. They are the experts, and their crews have, again, have just been very busy this last year. Okay, so I'm just going to go through these projects again. Feel free to turn on a light if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'm just going to keep moving if there's no questions. Some of these budget numbers are estimated budget numbers. Again, I just want to remind, I think City Council understands that we bid all of our projects so that we do get competitive pricing, so we will try to get the best pricing we can. This doesn't necessarily mean this is what we're going to spend on a particular project. We try to just cover our, we budget enough to cover these projects. Okay, so, the first one is Ashley Park Backstop and Drainage Improvement Project, $295,000. You'll see in the photo there, the park crew has done a great job improving here in recent months and, well, a couple years, last two years, the ball filled there, but the dugouts and the bleacher area, it doesn't drain very well. You'll see water standing in those, in this photograph. You'll see there's no sidewalks to get to the bleachers, so we would like to put sidewalks just for accessibility, and we'll put new bleachers and new backstops in, and also improve the dugouts. We're budgeting $30,000 to resurface the Beekler Park tennis courts. There's two tennis courts there. We've budgeted $900,000 for improvements at the Eagle Scout Park to improve the asphalt trail there. Cemetery asphalt road and parking lot improvements of $100,000. You'll see in the photo there, we have a dirt road, basically, that goes by the columbarium. This is in the far south part of the cemetery, so we'd like to asphalt that road, and then the next slide will be a columbarium that we're going to request as well.
Mr. Nickerson has a question.
I need to go back a slide, would you, on the Eagle Scout project. What are you anticipating to do? Are you going to replace all of that walkway with concrete, or what's the-
The plan right now is to replace it with concrete, but we are looking into options for the potential resurfacing of asphalt. I've been engaged with asphalt contractor to see if that's, if that's a doable thing. So we are, so this is, a worst-case scenario would be a replacement with concrete.
Asphalt would more than likely be less expensive-
Be less, less expensive, but probably not give us the life that concrete would.
Right. Well, about a year ago, we had some people who were complaining about some of the joints there, and we had promised that we were going to do something to try to smooth those out. I never went back to see if we did anything. Did we get anything done?
We did. Barry's crew did a great job. They went through and filled all those cracks. They got some of the resources from the street department and filled those cracks, and then they actually replaced all the planks and the bridge there. So they did improve it, yes, but it, again, it's, as you can see in the photos, they're still, I mean, it's, it could be improved more.
Okay, and I agree with that. Thank you.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. So theoretically, anything at Eagle Scout could eventually come out of Good Life District funds, correct?
Theoretically, yes.
That's something that, for a capital project, so this probably isn't just a question for Todd, maybe it's a question, Patrick. When we do a project, we have to create the ability to spend the budget, whether that money comes out of the general budget or if it comes out of another project, right?
Yes. So, this coming year, we're going to put in, we're into a different fund, the income of what we think Good Life District is, and then the out. So, yes, there will be funds available.
Okay. The reason I ask, I just know that when we talked a lot about it during the campaign, this would be the type of project, I would assume, that could be using Good Life funds?
Yes, and just to make a comment, we, when we planned for these projects, we didn't really know about the Good Life District, you know, if it would actually happen or not, and how it was actually going to work. So, none of these projects are utilizing, that are planned at this time to use those funds, but they could potentially, if those funds were available.
Nearly a million dollars, it might be helpful, potentially, I guess, I don't know. I don't know what our thoughts are yet, but, cool, thanks.
So, going back to-
Mr. Hossi.
We're going to keep you hopping, Todd. Yeah, so, my question, and I'm glad to see that on the cemetery, the improvements being done. We have this slide and the next slide of $122,000. My question really came, comes down to the funding part of it. So, we have a perpetual maintenance trust fund that's been created many, many, many years ago, and that the source of the money comes from the sale of lots. And so, we're using that perpetual maintenance trust fund for both, for the $122,000 and maintenance. I can understand maybe the $100,000 and the road improvements, because that's, that's just a normal improvement thing, but adding like a columbarium, I would, I would rather see the funding come from just general fund monies as opposed to from the perpetual maintenance trust. And the way that I view it, I view it much like the closure fund at the landfill. We have a closure trust fund, and we can't use it to buy the next landfill stage, you know, and so, it's meant to perpet, to continue the maintenance on, in perpetuity when you're done with the cemetery. It's easy to maintain now that you have half a dozen people that come out there every day, and you're there. But when you close that one and you move on to the next one, and they're not there, that's where the perpetual maintenance fund really comes in, you know, is that, in all likelihood, the city would either send the cemetery guys from one location to another all the time to maintain it, just to mow it and pick up sticks, or you could, you could just contract it out for somebody, because it's, it's like, what, 90 acres or something like that. And so, that's what, I think, historically, I've always viewed it as a closure fund. So when the cemetery gets full, we have money, and I, and I see this in cemeteries across Nebraska, and I'm sure others do too. We have private cemeteries in Grand Island as well. They have perpetual maintenance funds as well that are required. They're handled by third parties. Generally, they're invested by some trustee, and then they have audits, and the city doesn't have to go through any of that stuff. So, while I think it's legally okay to do what we're proposing, I'd rather not dip into the Maintenance Trust Fund, because I, you know, that I think is going to be the future maintenance, and I'd rather the money be, if it's already been paid in by the people who bought the cemetery lots, I'd rather see that money kept aside for when it has to be maintained, and we're talking about mowing and just general maintenance and not building the next cemetery out there. You know, and so that's, and I think, Pat, my question maybe is to you, do we have $100,000 or $122,000 in general fund monies that would be available if we didn't use the perpetual maintenance trust fund?
Yes. Simple answer, yes, so.
So I, I just, that's the way I view it, Todd. I think I, we've had this discussion when we bought the, the Sale Barn property many, many years ago, it was going to be the cemetery expansion site, and we used the trust fund monies for that, and I was against that at the time as well. And then when that turned out to be a soccer field and a baseball field, well, then, those monies were to be reimbursed, and I'm pretty sure they probably were. But that's my only thing. I'm glad to see all the maintenance. I'm glad to see the columbarium. I think those are all needed improvements, but I just don't want to use the funding source of the Maintenance Trust Fund.
And that's very good input, and that's, I think, why we have these discussions. And I have a future slide to kind of talk about that, but we do have, you know, a lot of projects that we're trying to get as many projects done as we can, and using the funding sources that are available. But, yes, thank you. Okay, the next slide is just replacement of some older playground at George Park for $150,000. This is a big one, Island Oasis renovation. So we budgeted $2 million of a potential $15 million project to get us started on potentially renovating Island Oasis Water Park. Councilmember, remember, we went through a master planning process. Our consultants gave us some different options, and we've, as a staff of, are making some recommendations on what that project should look like, and we've, have about a $15 million estimate with that project, which is to renovate the wave pool, kind of separate it from the kitty area that we'd like to build, and then also, we'd leave the lazy river, have some renovations to the buildings and to the slides, and so, yes, that would be a design. I'd get us started for design. One note with that-
Do you have your attendance figures for this summary yet?
I looked at Jeremy. Did we have attendance yet?
Oh, not finals.
We've, we've been running about 40,000 swimmers, so I think this was a good year, so I would anticipate those numbers would be pretty consistent. The last few years have been about 40,000 swimmers.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson.
When I look at the $15 million price tag, that's, that's a big number, huge. And is that the full renovation, fully renovated, based on previous consultants' recommendations and feedback from our visitors, and?
Yes.
Okay. What's the $2 million get us?
That gets us started. That's your, that's, that covers design.
That's it?
Fully covers design. Again, we will go through a bidding process. It may not, it may not be $2 million, but it covers us, to get us started. And, and one note, we've been having meetings with finance and administration. One of the thoughts is that we would, the rest of the project could potentially come out of a future bond, and you'll see, I'll show you a different slide later on, but we did earmark $750,000 a year to pay off that bond.
Seems like a big price tag, even for design. That's, that's a big number.
Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We've been going through this process this summer. This is just a continuation, or it's a carryover number, $70,000 to complete that. I did put some slides into your council packets about the master plan, if anybody wants to talk about any updates there. I, I may not show it tonight, just because the consultants do want to get in front of City Council here in a few weeks and kind of give you an update themselves on where it's at, but it's, we had great, I'll tell you, we had great input from the community, some great ideas, and I think we're going to have a great roadmap for the next, you know, 10 or 20 years. So I think that's coming. So $70,000 to complete the master plan. Skate, skate park renovations. We also did a public input meeting for the skate park. The skate park has kind of gotten to the age where it needs to be renovated or replaced, and through all those meetings and feedback from the community, we did insert 90, or $900,000 to design and build a new skate park at Pier Park.
So the, the skate park is currently, it's currently steel construction. Are you moving to concrete as opposed to steel?
Well, this would be a concrete skate park. It's kind of the, it's more the modern way to build them now, and less maintenance, it lasts longer, quieter, it's not hot, you know, when a rider, when it's a 100-degree day and the rider falls onto the steel, it's, it's, it's not very comfortable for them. And so, yes, a concrete skate park is the modern way to build them.
Mr. Nickerson?
What kind of input did you get? Did you have a good crowd turnout? I'm not sure what the skateboard interest is in our town.
I thought we did. We had about 75 people that showed up at the library that day. It was just a one-day meeting, and, yeah, we, we got some great input and had some design ideas, and, and I think if we, a community our size, I think, you know, can support a, a nice skate park, and I think the feedback, the consultant received, we felt the same way, and this is, this is the concept that we came up with.
Mr. Hossi.
So, Todd, after just watching the Olympics, would it look like the skate parks in the Olympics, or does, what would it look like as a compare to that?
I missed the skating in the Olympics, I'm sorry. So I don't, I'm not sure. I think it's, it does, if you've been to, you know, Carney has a skate park that would be similar to this one. Lincoln and Omaha have skate parks that would be similar in nature. I honestly can't comment if this is going to be Olympic level or not, but-
Well, I don't know how they score it, but I was, I was watching it, and I'm always curious, because it didn't look like it was significantly much, other than rolling concrete, you know, with a rail, maybe a stair rail, and some different things where they can land the board, and how they, how they land the board, but-
Lots of concrete, lots of angles.
Okay. Thanks, Todd.
Okay, so, park, just parking lot improvements at, at a couple of the parks for $150,000. Staley Park, the surfacing improvements there that we've been doing, this would be the, the final phase of that, where we would actually come back and overlay everything that's there now. So what we've done is we've, have some old that's there, and we have some new, and so we're going to overlay everything, make it look really nice, and then we're going to also add a network of sidewalks in the park for, for accessibility, and then we're going to close that, that Northeast Drive and make that a walk-in entrance. Here's just a couple picnic shelters that we want to add to the parks this year. So, Ryder Baseball Field Project, this is a big one that-
And Mr. Ha, Mr. Hossi has a question.
You go back a slide. If you close the Northeast entrance, maybe it's too late. If you close the Northeast, that's where the big entry thing, are you moving that, or you're just going to leave?
We're going to keep it and make that a nice walk-in entrance.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're actually going to cut down the road to 10 foot, so it doesn't feel like it's a road, so it feels like it's more of a trail, and we're going to use that nice entrances there now and make it feel like you've arrived at a pedestrian destination in that corner.
We used to have something similar when you came into Grand Island from the east as well, when you come in on Highway 30, and, of course, it's totally gone, you know, now. I was just curious, is how do you take such a monumental entrance, and then get rid of the entrance, and what do you do with the monumental part?
We're keeping, we're, that is staying. We're, we're not going to get rid of that entrance. It's just going to be a walk-in.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
So the Ryder Park Baseball Project, City Council did hear a presentation on this recently. So the plan is, is that we have a, have a, have a concept for a $5 million project. Clint Ruther was, was supposed to be here tonight. He apologized. He called me right before the meeting, and something had, had come up, but they have private fundraising efforts going on. Their, their plan is to raise $1.7 million. Clint told, tonight, explained that he said that, he said that I can share this number. He said that they are almost to a million dollars pledged already for private dollars for that project. So we are, again, it's more of a placeholder of a million dollars to get us started with this project. Design, again, is the, is the main item that, to start with. Most of the work would be done, and I have another slide to kind of show how the dollars shake out in the future, but, so, again, the city's portion of that would be about $3.5 million. Where private donations would be about 1.75. Staley Train Area, so this is another project that City Council recently heard a presentation on. Another exciting project to improve the area inside the Staley Train. The number here is, it's a, it's a $3 million project. The city's portion would potentially be 2.2, $2,250,000. I have put a placeholder, the slide should be, show differently, but I have put a placeholder of $150,000 to get us started with that project, again, whether it's design, or, you know, I know that the, the group that's, that's working on raising funds is applying for some grants, so, but again, we just, we need that spending authority, so it's in the budget. And Becky and Tom Gdowski are here as well, and with some of the steering committee for that fundraising group. So if Council has any questions about how that's going, again, it's an exciting project, and I don't think I'll dig too deep into it, just because City Council recently just had a presentation on this. Trail Development, so the West Connector Trail, City Council might recall that we were fortunate to receive a federal grant for this project. I, I put $75,000 in there. Again, that would cover the city's portion of our costs. It's a, it's a 20-80 grant, so the city's portion is 20% of that. I want to say it's $1.8 million project. The federal process is very slow. This project's still will probably not be completed till 2027, but this is, again, kind of keeping that project going. We did put a placeholder for $100,000 for park contingency. This is just overruns on other projects, or if a grant comes up, or if there's just a, like an unexpected project, so this is a fund that we can use for that. So now we're going into equipment, and again, I'll just kind of brush through this as quickly as I can, and let me know if you have any questions. So the Parks Department did have a bucket truck that was in last year's budget, just has not arrived yet, so this is a carryover item for $155,000. The Parks Department is also requesting an air, or, I'm sorry, an air compressor this year, two lift gates, a Bobcat, and two 11-foot mowers. And the cemetery is hoping to get a Bobcat track loader. So this is one of those slides I was talking about earlier. Again, we are trying to accomplish as many projects as we can, so we're using different funding sources. You can see in the general fund, we were proposing to spend $2.4 million. The keynote fund, almost $800,000. Food and Beverage, almost $3.5 million, and we were proposing in the cemetery fund to spend $122,000. And the next slide, I, I don't go through everything here, but this is our, kind of our five-year plan. It's, it's a tentative plan. Plans change, but you'll see, just a couple notes there, that you'll see on Island Oasis renovation, that 200, or, I'm sorry, $2 million in 2025, and then $750,000 in the next few years, and that was just placeholder for that potential bond payment. And then you'll also see, in the Ryder Baseball Field Project, we have a million dollars, but then coming back with 2.5 million dollars, and the Staley Train Area, again, $150,000, and then coming back with 2.1 million dollars.
Mr. Nickerson?
Now, Todd, could you go back a slide? There you go. I found that slide very intriguing, because, to your point, you're, you're trying to find the buckets to get the funding, and when I look at the food and beverage tax, we're looking at almost three and a half million. Is that on top of the projects that are already being funded by the food and beverage tax, or how's that all play? And, Patrick, this question will be coming to you as well, as far as, you know, the buckets that these are in, the funds, are we comfortable that we have that money available for these projects this year?
So for the food and beverage, I actually have a little bit of a presentation on that later, for that. So, yes, we do have funds for that. We're spending some of those reserves down for the food and beverage, but with the annual revenue, not to dig into my presentation, but food and beverage revenue is around $3 million, 3.2 million a year. We have, I think, five different commitments that we have to pay out of there, and the remainder's about 1.2 million for projects. And so, this one is 3.4, 3.4, so- And so this one is 3.4, so we're using some of those reserves to get those reserves down in the food and beverage fund.
You're comfortable with these numbers, then, as far as the funding is available for these projects?
Yes.
The answer's always yes, I mean, without going into the detail.
Always, yeah. You know, depending on what, on Council's direction, so yes.
Right. Well, I'm going to go back to my question on the $2 million for the design part of the Island Oasis. To me, that just seems unbelievably big, especially when you just talked about $150,000 for the inside of Stally Park area and all that. Where do we find that $2 million number being legitimate for a design phase of things that are really already in existence? I don't, to me, that just seems astronomically high. And I'm not sure how we arrive at a $2 million number for that.
Well, so, just using the rule of thumb, was, was 10% of, of project cost for design. So that's where that came from. So, but to cover ourselves, we, that's an extra $50,000, or $500,000 to cover. Again, we would not spend that money if we don't need to spend that money. But we thought we'd do that as a placeholder.
Does that seem to track correctly? I'm, I'm just talking to the folks that have been around these projects, that you would be spending $2 million just to design something, that most of it's already in existence?
Pretty well. I, I think with Keith, he, all the projects that he does, I think he does about a 10%, is that right?
It kind of depends upon the size of the project, too. The bigger the project...
Out there, so, all of those things put together, I think, like Todd said, I, I think he's probably high. He's probably budgeting a little higher than need. But until you get into it more, I think his, his budget number seems somewhat in the realm.
I'm not sure I even see it up there. I don't know that I even see the $2 million in that group. Is, where does those funds come from?
So if you look at the General Fund, we put $1.5 million. And then we're pulling a half a million dollars out of food and beverage for the Island Oasis renovation.
Okay, I see you got it going across, okay, good enough. Seems high, and I, I think I understand where you're coming from, and hopefully it won't be anywhere close to that. But I guess you got a budget based on historical data.
Mr. Hawsey.
Thank you, Mayor. So really, I think my questions are probably for Pat. You know, I, we talked briefly earlier on the Cemetery Care Fund or Trust Fund, the $122,000 there. Mitch talked about the food and beverage, which is about, maybe almost three years' worth of available project funding for, for food and beverage. You were down to about $1.2 or so. Now, in the Keno, that, that same thing, again, there's probably two or three years' worth of Keno, because we don't bring in near that for Keno in a given year. So the $795,000 in Keno money has got to be two or three years' worth of funding as well.
So in '25, we're projecting $300,000 in Keno revenues. So again, that's another spending the, the fund balance down. So as, as you know, when you, when you spend the fund balance down, that's one-time fees, or, you know, one-time expenditures.
Yeah. And so this comes back to Todd, so this is, one of the things we had a discussion a while back when you were in Stally Park, where you were taking out the waiting pool and putting in the splash pad thing. You were talking about not being able to do very many projects at one time, you know? And so this seems like a lot of projects at one time. So how does that fit in with your ability to manage all of this stuff that's in front of us?
Very carefully. No, I, I think the Stally Park was, just because they're on top of each other, doing irrigation system, doing, you know, the splash pad and that type of thing. But you're right, it's, it'll be, you know, that's why we, you know, have a good team. And, and yeah, we'll, we'll do our best, but you're right, there's, this will be a lot to manage.
Okay, yeah, because this is an awful lot on the plate, and from our funding source, it's really rolling up two or three years' worth of funding ability all in one budget. You know, and, and we still have carryover from last year, at least in the, in the case of a truck, so. Okay, thank you, Todd.
Mr. Sheard.
Thanks. It's pretty exciting to me to hear, I mean, I'm involved with the Stally Park project, and I know that we're going to raise the $750,000 you mentioned. And we've got Ryder Park said $1.75 million as of tonight. That's what the number, no, but that's the number they think they can...
They think they can raise that, but they've, they think they have pledges for almost a million dollars today.
So right there, between those two projects, potentially $2.5 million raised by the community on a couple projects. I guess that's a luxury we have, that I'd like to be able to follow through on our end. Again, full disclosure, helping with the Stally Park project. But the Ryder Park project, I think, the presentation they gave, very compelling. The usage of that for the community, the Stally Park is a great one for the community. We're going to hear two presentations on some private companies that help us out with the golf course and the shooting park. I just think it's an opportunity for us, I support finding the money for those two projects, to kind of honor the people, the taxpayers involved with those groups that are donating. They've proven with their dollars, and are proving with their dollars, that that's something they want us to support. And I appreciate you finding the, the budget for it where possible, so, thanks.
I don't have anything else unless there's more questions.
No more questions.
Derek Hansen, did you want to speak still? You can come on up.
Thank you for letting me speak in front of you today. As mentioned, my name is Derek Hansen, and I am the president for Harland Football Club here in Grand Island. We are a soccer club that has been around for over 10 years, offering both recreational and competitive soccer to Grand Island youth. This upcoming season, we have more than 500 kids who are participating in our program, and also have more than, or have dozens of fantastic volunteer parents. The first thing I'd like to say is I want to express my gratitude towards the Parks and Rec Department, in particular, Todd and Barry back there, as well as Patty, who's not here, is over the last several years, we have been able to work with them to provide a better soccer experience here in Grand Island. Just one of the many items that we have been able to accomplish is being able to, we used to have to practice at Grand Island parks. We are now capable of practicing out at the Vets Complex, and we can call that our home, which is very appreciative. I hope that, along with Barry, and we, I mean, just meeting before here, we continue to have talks. And I hope that we're able to continue to have talks and progress in the development of Vets Complex. So to start, I want to take you guys back to 2017. On a personal level, my daughter is four years old. I'm not a native Grand Islander, but my wife is. We are looking to get her into activities to do here in Grand Island. So my wife is recalling the opportunities that she had. We get her into dance and a soccer club called Harland Football Club as a micro soccer player, and thus starts our ongoing, still ongoing journey into youth sports and activities for our kids. Coincidentally, in 2017, Todd McCoy was facing budget cuts to the tune of $249,097 in personnel costs. In an article published by The Independent on July 19, 2017, Todd was quoted as saying, and I'm going to pick parts of what he said, in regards to those personnel cuts. "We would probably not be able to provide the ballfield maintenance for the leagues and the teams for chalking fields, dragging fields, and striping the soccer fields. We probably have to ask the leagues and teams to do their own maintenance." The title of the Independent article was "Impact of Park Budget Cuts Will Be Very Visible." If I could rename that article seven years later, it would be "Impact of Parks Budget Cuts Will Be Felt." And that is what I'm here to talk to you guys about tonight. Todd's concerns turn to be prophetic. His budget did get cut, and he was forced to tell all leagues and teams that they were now responsible for maintaining city amenities. Where The Independent got the title wrong, in my opinion, is that the cuts were not visible. Baseball and softball fields still got chalked. Soccer fields still got striped. But it was at the expense of already hard-working volunteer organizations who brought and still bring forth opportunities for the youth of Grand Island. How those volunteers, organizations, were affected differently. For most, if not all, that meant purchasing striping equipment, purchasing painting equipment, or chalking equipment, which, in a little twist, I don't know if you can say irony or not, meant that they were now obligated to keep up with the maintenance of the things they owned. Of course, to run that equipment, chalk and paint have to be purchased. Then you need the personnel to run the equipment. At HFC, that meant paying someone to spend what would be their free time spraying paint over the lines. We probably haven't paid these individuals enough, but many of them, but many of them were a part, were having part of our organization, and know the burden that it causes. And we can't ever express our thanks enough for those who have stepped up and done it. For other organizations, I was informed that one of their board members leaves work in order to maintain the city amenities. Now, I don't know if that person takes PTO, if they take vacation, or they just lose wages. But that should be something that should not have to be done. All organizations had to increase their overhead in one way or another. And while I can't speak on how they all handled it, my guess is that, like HFC, those price increases had to be passed on to the families of Grand Island. Todd is asking for an additional full-time employee to be added to his staff. I would ask the Council to approve this request in hopes that the Parks and Rec Department can return at being able, let me find my sheets here, at being able to maintain the baseball, softball, and all other fields or courts that had to be cut seven years ago. But there's more to it than just that. I'm going to use an example from HFC. Due to the personnel issues that are currently being experienced at the soccer fields, due, they have to be openly, available to be opened for a particular window of time. On May 31 of this year, for the most part, the Vets Complex had to be closed. Soccer fields weren't be able to be painted, no goals, just green space to practice. For the fall, fields were planned and done the week of August 12. In contrast, Carney was able to get out to soccer fields, complete with stripes and fields, in July. For our competitive teams, we had to tell Nebraska State Soccer that we could host games August 17 throughout the middle of October. Now, I have to give credit where credit's due. For whatever reason, Nebraska State Soccer scheduled us a couple games in early August, outside of the range that we had asked for. Barry step, was able to get out there and give us two fields to have those two home games. And you might wonder, well, what big deal is that? Well, getting home games in Grand Island is very difficult. Because of the, because of the personnel issues and the narrow window that is provided to have the Vets Complex open, we are not able to get as many home games as we possibly could. As a matter of fact, HFC teams are listed for 22 home games. We're playing seven in Grand Island. We call Lincoln our home for the other 15 games, because they are outside of the range that the Vets Complex can be open. And that is just one season for one club. This has been going on for multiple seasons for multiple clubs. But having said that, it's gone up from last season. We only had two or three games at home. So again, through conversations, through working with Todd, Barry, the whole group, we have been improving year over year. Todd brought it up, but in January of 2025, Confluence will be unveiling their final plan for the Parks Master Plan. I can only speak hypothetically here, of course, but it very well may come with some recommendation, recommendation for some more amenities. These amenities will eventually require maintenance. Maintenance that cannot be done without more cuts if there is not more personnel hired. So what's the next cut going to be? Are baseball teams, are baseball softball organizations going to be forced to rake their own dirt? Are we at HFC going to be forced to mow the grass out at the Vets Complex? Also, speaking of Confluence, this isn't the only, this isn't only a youth organization problem. In the packet Todd had provided for you guys on page 31, it's here. The number one thing that Confluence had said in their survey response, an order of priority, enhancements, renovations, maintenance to existing parks and facilities. I stand before some of you who have gone on record talking about the momentum Grand Island has. Yes, Grand Island does have momentum. They have the opportunity for some exciting changes in the years to come. There's plenty to get excited about. I voted for it myself. But we cannot let all this excitement, all this momentum, get in the way of making sure that the city can take care of what it already has. And I'm going to pivot away from the maintenance for a little bit. Todd never requested this, so there's nothing official, but I'm going to make a request, go on record to say that the Parks and Rec Department needs another individual, but not for maintenance. I learned that a handful, in my research for this, I learned that a handful of baseball teams actually traveled, traveled to Alda and paid fees to Alda because they didn't know the availability of ballfields here in Grand Island. All that money was spent out of Grand Island. It wasn't until that I mentioned to one of the parents at one of my soccer practices that I said, hey, that doesn't look like these baseball fields are being used. They reached out to the city, and they started reserving fields for the city. Right now, there is no way for any person or organization to find out when the amenities are available. Unlike the Field House, you can see the who, the what, the where, and when something is being used. That level of transparency does not exist for the 20-plus baseball ballfields, 10-plus soccer fields, multiple tennis courts, and paddleball courts. And that's how it works for HFC. We send spreadsheets and spreadsheets to Patty to keep, so she knows, the city knows, who, what, where, and when we are out at the complex. I'm only guessing that that's how it works for all the other teams, organizations in Grand Island. Instead of being reactive to this type of situation, the Parks and Rec needs to be able to be proactive. Having someone who can reach out to the individuals, reach out to the teams and organizations, getting to know them. You have a casino being built in Grand Island. You have some, some visitors that wanted to go play some paddleball. They go to a paddleball court. It's being reserved for a league. That type of information needs to be able to be accessed, so people have the ability to know when and where to go. Teams can be reserved for whatever, for public play, league play, whatever, but nobody can see it right now. There, they need to be able to reach out and continue dialogue to make sure needs are being met on both ends, because it's a two-way street, of course. Having someone who can manage a system like this, I've actually been told the system exists. Parks and Rec has it, but they don't have anybody who can manage it. I know that all decisions, as Todd presented here with budget, and all the budgets you hear, come with a price. I also know that these decisions could have financial implications on organizations like myself. But I will also point out that this pamphlet that Confluence provided that said that, whoops, wrong page. The demographic said, first and foremost, they talk about how the median household in Grand Island is below average, not only in the U.S., but in Nebraska. And how it, in Grand Island, one of the most important things to keep in check is the affordability of park and recreational opportunities. The last statement that the Confluence pamphlet said is, Grand Island is an active, active community, but it trails the... The last statement that the Confluence pamphlet said is Grand Island is an active, active community, but it trails the averages. So please allow for the organizations of Grand Island to be able to focus and help improve those averages by being able to focus on what their mission is, which is to provide all organizations, which is to provide all organizations for, so young people, to provide opportunities for young people by not having to maintain city amenities. And it is my hope that all organizations will be able to continue to work in partnership with the city to enrich the quality of life as stated in the Parks and Rec mission statement. Thank you.
Agenda item four B, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, Jack Rabbit Run Golf Course Landscapes Budget Proposal. Mr. McCoy? And for the record, also, please present or please introduce the presenters.
I'm going to introduce Sedana, who is our golf manager at Jack Rabbit. She works for Landscapes Unlimited.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for your time. I just want to start off by introducing, I have Joel Hall in here, who is the superintendent at Jack Rabbit Run. I have Jeff Roscoe there, which is the assistant superintendent. And then next to Jeff is Jerry Watson. Jerry is our assistant general manager out at the golf course. All right, so just, this is a quick agenda of some things that I'd like to cover with you today. The voice of the customer, so our net promoter score is fifty-two this year. Anything that is above fifty is considered excellent. This is on a scale of negative one hundred to one hundred, so we are extremely proud of the score. Our course conditions remain rated very high at a four-point-five. And our pace of play number actually dropped some. We strongly believe the reason for that is we have a lot of new golfers at the, out at our facility. So new golfers, meaning people that are just learning to golf, people that don't golf necessarily very often, maybe not as skilled in the sport, but they're out there for more of a recreational opportunity. So the pace of play, them being a little bit slower, is kind of a trade-off for us actually getting new clientele out to the course, which is very exciting to see. Our pace of play has actually improved. It's just that we have a lot of longtime golfers are used to being able to basically come out, get a tee time whenever they like. It used to be pretty open, being able to golf eighteen holes and maybe three and a half hours. We're a lot busier right now, so that's a lot more difficult for people to do. So I view it as a positive that we're seeing a lot more people out at the course. Our ratings for our staff being helpful and professional, again, are very high. Just a couple of quick quotes, "Jack Rabbit is by far my favorite golf course. Everything is so well managed. The course itself is always in top shape, prices are fair, and the staff is incredible." That was from Bob Geiger. And another quote is, "This course is well-maintained as I've ever seen it," from Dana Crockett. Okay, on the next slide, so talking about our golf operations, our golf outings, we, again, I feel that we have the opportunity to increase our golf outings by ten percent. Like everything else, price of everything is going up, price of food is going up, beverage. Everything that goes into a golf outing is a little bit more expensive, just like everything else seems to be going. This still does keep us in line and below our market competitors, though. One thing I want to point out is that we are losing some outings. I don't have the ability, due to our current facilities, to grow to the current space that we have, whether it be just the size of the space itself, or more so because I don't have any way to hold a private type of event. People will call up and want to book our room for a business-type meeting, or maybe a baby shower, or all kinds of things. And I explain to them, absolutely, we would love to host you, but I need you to understand that you're not in a private room, the snack bar is at one end of the room, there'll be golfers that will be coming in and out, and they need to get to the restrooms. And, and quite honestly, then they say, well, that's just not really going to work for us, especially for business meetings. They really need to be able to have a private space. As far as revenue generation goes, probably the biggest thing that we would really like to do this year is to redefine the weekend to include Friday. So we would like our weekend pricing to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This is the same thing that our direct competitor does here in town. This would help us to generate some extra dollars on Fridays. We are extremely busy on Fridays and Saturdays. We are pretty busy on Sundays. But that would help us there with revenue generation. Again, we want to continue to use our Jack Rabbit Run app. It's a one-stop shop. We have a loyalty program. We have the new Tag Marshall GPS screens on all of our golf carts. We, I work hard to sell advertising on those, which brings in revenue. We're proposing small increases to our public golf prices. We've added a few new pass options this year while keeping most of the pass prices fairly flat. I don't know if you remember, last year, we took a significant increase, increase in pass prices. So when we set our budget for twenty twenty-three, it was the middle of twenty twenty-two. Minimum wage was nine fifty an hour. We set our budget, we went all through twenty twenty-three, not knowing the election was going to happen in November, and we were going to have to account for that first minimum wage increase. So when we did our budget pricing last year for pass prices, we basically had to account for a three-dollar-an-hour minimum wage increase because we had to account for two years. That's the reason that we were forced to take a significant increase in pass prices. But again, we want to keep those relatively flat for this year. In our food and beverage area, we continue to manage our inventory. I adjust when necessary, utilizing our app or GPS system. Our customers have the ability that they can order food and beverage ahead from the, being on the course. Our external recruitment, it, I'm not going to lie to you, it's a huge challenge for us. Just like I had explained before, I just don't have the private space available to have any type of events that's not a golf tournament anywhere from March to November. And some of the golf tournaments, I don't even have the space to host those for the size of my room. Grounds maintenance, you know, we are committed to providing our team the resources they need to be successful, whether that be personnel, the chemicals they need, the equipment they need. And we really just want to make sure that we enhance the on-course experience for our guests. We want our course to be the best course in Grand Island. And we've been voted the best course in Grand Island through the Independence Contest this last year. I hope everybody voted because those will be coming out in September, and I really want the three-peat. We continue the best practices, like the early order program, so we get discounted purchasing, timely chemical operation, or applications, and then keeping our end-of-season inventory minimal. We do receive daily compliments on the condition of the course. All right, so this is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four financial summary. This has final financials through the month of July on here. So August and September are budgeted numbers. But fiscal year twenty twenty-three for us was an amazing year for Jack Rabbit Run, financially, the number of new patrons we saw, and our course conditions. And I'm really proud to say that twenty twenty-four is going to exceed that. So right now, our EBITDA for fiscal year twenty twenty-four has an one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-dollar positive variance over the budget. And that's a hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-seventy-three-dollar positive swing from last year over the same time period from October through July. This slide compares the year-over-year financial comparison. So I think as a city council and numbers people, probably what draws your eye first is our expenses have gone up nine-point-six percent. Those additional expenses are attributed to equipment leases, which now come out of our operating expenses, the minimum wage increase, which we all know that we're battling. And we will continue to do that for the next two years. But obviously, anytime that you increase expenses, you want to increase your revenue to cover those. So our goal is to increase revenue, and as you can see, we achieved that with a seventeen-point-two percent in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Including all expenses, equipment, leases, and the airport lease, we are essentially operating at a break-even level, which is a tremendous improvement from day one when Landscapes took over managing the facility. We are also accomplishing this with basically the same number of golf rounds. So you can see on this slide, the total change in golf rounds here from twenty-three to twenty-four is one-hundred-and-eighteen. That's a Saturday morning. We've had some weather days this year, which we've lost some golf rounds. But that is, has had an, it's a positive effect considering that our rounds are staying the same. All right, so fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget summary. We're projecting minimal growth in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. One large expense that we will be taking on is a new cart lease. So currently, we have the Club Car carts that were leased through the city. It was a five-year lease, and that lease is over. Our last payment is September of twenty twenty-four. And we will keep those carts into the winter. Our new cart lease, we got three bids from the main golf cart companies, so it was Yamaha, Club Car, and Easy Go. Those three companies all came back, from the lowest to the highest was a fifty-five-dollar difference in a cash-by-price of a cart. Club Car was the cheapest, and we decided to go with a Yamaha cart, which was five dollars more per cart. The reason that we made that decision is the fleet that was at the course prior to the current Club Cars was a Yamaha fleet. And visiting with Joel and Jeff, they had minimal issues with the carts mechanically. They were much easier to service than the Club Car carts are. But they're, they're bigger seat-wise, they have more headroom, they're quieter. The main reason we chose to go with Yamaha, though, is they actually use half the gas that the Club Car carts do. Joel and Jeff have fuel records, I don't know how many years back. Yeah, ten years, that we have the data to document that. The Yamaha has the same engine in it as it did when we had the previous fleet. So over the course of the five-year lease, we're anticipating a thirty-eight-thousand-dollar-plus savings just in fuel costs by going with the Yamaha carts. That was the main decision behind that. What I'm needing from the city council and the leadership is a decision needs to be made by you if you want to continue with us to lease equipment for the golf course, or if you want to begin going back to purchasing equipment for the golf course. So the carts are going to be a lease, but the equipment that I'm referring to is mostly the maintenance equipment, the mowers, and, and everything that Joel and his crew use to maintain the golf course at the condition that it's in. So the benefits to leasing, you get new equipment basically every five years or as needed. You have lower repair costs due to having newer equipment on site. And you're spreading your payments out over years instead of a one-time capital outlay. But the benefits to purchasing, overall, you're going to pay less to purchase when you're comparing how much you're paying in lease payments, and you have absolutely no equity in that piece of equipment when you're done. So you're paying for eighty percent of a purchase price of this mower. And then in five years, you're going to get some trade-in value, but you're not going to get eighty thousand dollars worth of trade-in value on that. Your equipment, obviously, if you own it, it becomes an asset. And then those payments do not affect the operational budgets bottom-line if it's purchased with capital dollars. But the key factor here is, if as a city, you decide that you want to start purchasing equipment, we can't just purchase a fleet and keep it for twenty-five or thirty years, or you are going to end up in the same condition that you were when Landscapes took over. The majority of the equipment at the course is currently leased because the equipment that was left there, it just wasn't going to be able to do the job to take care of the course the way it needed to be taken care of. Golf rounds are expected to plateau here in the next few years and possibly even decline. You know, COVID was a horrible thing, but COVID sure helped golf. The rounds of golf skyrocketed across the nation. Now we're starting to see that plateau. People are getting back to their regular lives and their other activities. And let's face it, everything's expensive, including golf, including groceries. And when you have to make a choice of where you're going to spend your money, if you have to buy groceries or pay your car insurance, and you don't have money for a round of golf, then you're going to spend your money on the things that are necessary. We have some options that we would like to explore with you to help generate more revenue at the golf course to help offset these increasing expenses that we're going to see in equipment and in chemicals and in food and beverage when we know that our golf rounds are basically going to plateau and possibly lower. So I'll talk about that here more in a minute. Next slide, then, is the proposed capital asks for this year. So for maintenance equipment, we still got our pickup truck. Bench is still sitting on the cinder blocks. We really need a pickup truck that is safe and will suit the needs of the course to be able to get around town, to move snow when needed out there, when we do have events, or just when we need to get to work. Most of you have been out to the golf course, there is, the wind blows through there like crazy. The road and the parking lot will drift shut in a matter of fifteen or twenty minutes, depending on the storm. So we need a way to be able to move snow and have a decent vehicle out there. We do have a spin grinder that was a carryover from fiscal year twenty-four. And then we are asking for the purchase of a Groundmaster four-thousand-D T-four mower through Sourcewell if you choose to go the purchase route versus leasing. This mower actually is replacing a city-owned mower that is still on the course. And again, I just want to remind you, if you choose to lease, it will affect the bottom line. If you choose to purchase, it's the one-time layout of capital funds. As far as building enhancements go, we're asking for thirty thousand dollars to do some repair down in the maintenance building. There's some issues with the roof on the building, so when it snows and then it warms up and that snow melts, the gentlemen have to wear rain suits inside the building. We have video. It literally rains inside through the insulation and down on top of them. It's not safe and it needs to be taken care of. I have a project right now, I'm working on getting a bid, but I don't know if I'll be able to get it completed by the end of fiscal year twenty-four for a ten-thousand-dollar snack bar improvement, so that might be something that I'm asking to carry over. I am quite honestly, I don't feel it's fiscally responsible for me to put more funding into the current clubhouse until a decision can be made on what direction we're going to be taking with that building in the future. So I'm not asking you for any more money for that. Our on-course improvements, last year, this fiscal year twenty-four was the first year of a multi-year project of the tree removal and planting. We've only spent twenty-five thousand dollars of the forty-five thousand dollars that we were approved. And we removed fifty trees, and then we'll be planting twenty trees yet this fall. We're down to about a hundred-and-ten trees that need to be removed. So that's about three-quarters of the way done from, with removal from the start. Now, going forward, in future years, our focus is going to transition from removal and disposal of trees into the strategic planting of trees onto the course. Also carrying over the project to renovate Lake Number Four, we opened the golf course for walkers on February twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth of this year. There just wasn't time to get that project done because we're going to have to reroute golfers around that hole for the, the time that it takes to complete that project. We are asking for some concrete, a concrete pad down by the other maintenance building, and we need to do some repair on some cart paths on the course, a range ball dispenser, and then mats for the driving range. We've seen an increased use of our range, and this is going to help maintain the conditions out there. And it's also going to allow the driving range to be used in the winter months when weather permits, which is going to generate some more revenue. You know, we have those three or four days in January and again in February where it's fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five degrees. And we are not going to open the golf course because we could very likely damage the asset. We could open the driving range if we have those mats out there that they're just hitting from and then not destroying the grass on the driving range. Okay, so items for the radar. This is really what I wanted to make sure that I put in front of you today. The Landscapes Golf Management Contract will end on December thirteen of twenty twenty-five. So we have just under a year and a half left on the five-year contract. But almost more importantly, your airport lease renewal of the land where the golf course is is done April thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. And the reason I bring that up now is I really want to encourage the city and the council to be proactive with that airport lease so that we can start making the needed improvements on the golf course. Because obviously, it's not fiscally responsible to throw a bunch of money into a project on the golf course if you don't even know if you're going to have a renewed lease with the airport. Of course, I assume you will, but until the, the contract is drawn up and everything is signed, we really don't know for sure. Us personally, myself personally, and Jack Rabbit Run, there's, we're really excited. I mean, you, there are so many great things going on in Grand Island right now that you, as the, the governing body of the city and the city administrators, there's so much stuff. You've got the Prairie District. We've got a new children's museum coming up. You've got the all-inclusive Ryder Park Playground. Upcoming improvements to the baseball fields that were talked about. Todd talked about the skate park, Island Oasis, the Stolly Train Improvement, the West Connector Trail Development. the West Connector Trail Development. All of the things that the Good Life District are going to bring to the city of Grand Island, including that amazing sports center and the improvements to the Eagle Scout Park area. What we want is we want the city golf course and our facilities to match everything else that's going on in the community. We are the city golf course, and we want those 300,000 people that are going to come here and use that sports facility when they have time off and they want to go golfing. We want to make Jack Rabbit Run. We are an amenity of the city, just like the water park and the ballfields and the fieldhouse and the other areas that receive capital funding for improvements. The difference with Jack Rabbit Run is that we are basically breaking even operationally, which I'm extremely proud of, but that doesn't change the fact that we still need capital funding for facility improvements to continue to be successful. We do not want to be forgotten out there, kind of outside the city limits a little bit, and we're out there on our own. We need to be included in the short and long-term planning of Capital Parks projects. Jack Rabbit Run is successfully being managed by Landscapes operationally, but we are still a city facility and need the financial support as part of the Parks and Rec Department. So what that comes to, then, is clubhouse, cart barn, and deck. I'm really proud of how our clubhouse looks right now. Put a lot of lipstick on it. I don't think I can put more lipstick on it, I'm not going to lie. There's new carpet throughout. I've painted every wall in that clubhouse. We've put new siding on it. I've done the ceilings, I've done the lighting. We had a couple city councilmen come out and see it, and I think that they were impressed with what they saw versus over what it was before we took over. I, of course, invite all of you to come out anytime. I would love to show it to you and give you a tour. But what it comes down to is it's a modular that's 50, almost 50 years old. It's 48 years old right now. That's already had two additions put on to it. We operate on a septic system. The septic system is also 48 years old. A septic system has a life expectancy of 15 to 40 years. The plumber has told us that it will fail. It is not if it's going to fail, it's when it's going to fail. We are not hooked to city water. City water and city sewer is 900 feet from our current clubhouse. It's at the airport fence. And the path to get from the clubhouse to that hookup would disrupt nothing on the golf course as far as a green, a tee, or a fairway. We would strictly need to go through rough areas of the course. I, again, am consistently turning away business. I don't have the facilities to host what people are requesting to use space for. I have minimal storage. I have the liquor cabinet in my office. We walk through the cases of beer to get from the snack bar side over to the pro shop side in the back. We don't have a cart barn for our carts. And even though we're leasing those pieces of equipment, it's still our responsibility to maintain and provide a quality product to our patrons. Over half of our current fleet has seats that are cracked due to weather. The tires become weather-checked and they go flat. And those new GPS screens could really use a cart barn for some protection on them. The on-course items, something to have on your radar going forward, is the age and the condition of the irrigation system on the course. So the original system, the piping, the PVC pipe that's in the ground, is 48 years old, and that's in the areas of the tees, the greens, and the fairways. The inside rough piping was installed 39 years ago. And then the newest piping on the course is in the outside rough in the driving range, and it's 31 years old. One thing that we would like for you to consider on our future plan is if we can reconfigure holes 10, 11, and 12, which are currently on the landfill, and that's going to help eliminate numerous maintenance issues with irrigation. That would mean relocating, constructing a new green for 10. We would move all of hole 11 and the first 25% of hole 12. So I have a video. Well, and that's not my video anymore, but let's see if we can go back. Nope, that's not the video we're showing either. Okay, this is a video that is driving across hole number 11. So every dip in valley is due to the land shifting because of the landfill. This part of the course has been leveled flat twice in the lifetime of the course. This is what it was this last week. Joel's driving and I'm doing the video. So this is what our golfers go over on hole 11. Kind of get the gist, it's a little, can be a little nauseating.
That's the par three, right?
Yes, the par three, yeah, yep, yep. Yeah, well, that path to get there is still pretty hilly. All right, well, we're going to skip through what we already covered here. All right, I'm a visual person, so I included some pictures into the presentation here. This first picture that you're looking at here, this is the practice green, which is on the landfill. This is the hole number 11 green. So because of the hills and valleys on the green, when we get moisture, especially in the wintertime and that moisture freezes, Joel and Jeff literally have to go out and they either have to catch the water with their broom before it freezes and sweep the greens. But overnight, what happens when that water freezes, they have to come back every morning and they have to chip all of this ice off of the greens. Otherwise, it's going to kill those greens. This next slide here on the left, this is an irrigation line on hole number 11. So due to the shifting ground, this pipe up here closest to us is about 16 inches below the surface. It drops down to five feet in the ground from the ground shifting. So again, you can understand with, this is PVC pipe. It's not meant to be flexible. And the glue that's gluing these joints together, when the ground shifts, we have significant irrigation issues. This is another example of the irrigation pipe that it bends due to the shifting of the ground and the garbage. Picture on the left, this is on the six green?
Sixteen.
Sixteen green.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry. Joel knows. This is an irrigation pipe that sprung a significant leak because of the garbage underneath of it. This slide over here on the right is the garbage that was pulled out underneath that pipe. Picture on the left is trenching to find the broken wires from an irrigation problem that we have. This picture on the right is a little hard to tell what it is. This is a four-and-a-half-foot-deep hole that's full of water. And the reason it's full of water is because this tee ruptured that fits together two eight-inch pipes. So, because I'm a visual person, that's what it looks like. We were fortunate enough that this happened at 10:00 in the morning and not at 10:00 at night. So 1,600 gallons of water are going to go through that pipe in a minute. And the entire golf course could have been flooded. It literally happened when we had golfers on the number 9 tee and they called in and said, "You've got a geyser, you need to get somebody out here." So we immediately shut it down, dug the hole, four-and-a-half feet deep. A couple pictures after we got some water pumped out. And then, again, that's the close-up of what you can see right here. It not only split the tee, it split that pipe all the way down. This was our fourth catastrophic irrigation failure this season. We've all been lucky enough that they all have happened during the day when somebody's there to fix them. We've also battling just smaller irrigation issues daily over at the course. All right, so now I'd like to visit with you a little bit about, we need to generate some revenue. We have some future opportunities to do that. So our weekends are generally full with golf. During the week, we run eight different leagues while keeping half the course open for public golfers. We can increase, I can increase the revenue by booking in more tournaments. I can book tournaments every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I can bring in a lot more money. But what that does is that sacrificing the public to be able to golf at the course. And I don't think that that's what we want to do in visiting with the city administrators. We're the city amenity, we're the city course. We want the public to be able to golf around a golf. I feel that we have a good mix right now of tournaments and having public golf open. So the Parks and Recreation Master Plan survey, it was in the initial packet that I saw for the presentation tonight, but I think that you have the slides in your packet. And again, I'm parroting a little bit here, but ranking the improvement options in order of priority, again, the number-one priority is enhancements, renovation, and maintenance of existing parks and facilities, and we are a parks facility. On the Recreation Program and Analysis Plus Recommendations slide, the second item listed is for programs for active adults and seniors. Well, that's definitely golf. In fiscal year '24, we were approved $50,000 to do a study to see if it was better to remodel and add on to our current clubhouse or to build a new clubhouse. I didn't feel comfortable spending $50,000 to get that answer and to get some initial plans. So I limited the architects to $10,000 before we just make a decision of what we're going to do. It didn't take them very long to say that adding on to the existing clubhouse is really not a great idea. The entire clubhouse would have to be gutted, and then the outside structure is questionable at this point if we would be able to use it or not. I had numerous meetings with the architects. They drew up different plans. We kind of had them shift some things around. We had them draw up plans. That was a grand scale that included the things that we really feel are necessary, which is a nice banquet space that we can have a large gathering, or we could section it off into smaller gatherings, space to have simulators to bring in additional revenue. And then we also said, "Let's add some other things just to see if it's even possible." I had them add an indoor mini golf area. We don't have mini golf in Grand Island anymore. I had them add in some pickleball courts indoor. Now, do we necessarily need to have all that at Jack Rabbit Run? No, but when I have an architect working on a plan, I'm going to have him develop something grand, and then if we decide, we can start pulling pieces out of that. And so that's why I did that. So one of the biggest things and one of the easiest ways that we at Jack Rabbit Run can start generating more revenue is getting a space where we can have simulators in these bigger banquets. So simulators create a wow factor for everyone, and it separates us from our competition. And I don't want to read this whole slide to you, but they have a low associated cost and they represent a high-margin business. Not only are you bringing in money on renting the simulator spaces to the public or for team-building events for businesses or for parties, you're also bringing in raw revenue because they're going to drink a few beers and they're going to eat while they're heading on the simulators. So it's also going to help our merchandise sales. People can try out clubs, we can do fittings with simulators. These machines are phenomenal. They'll measure everything, ball spin, club head speed, face angle, all kinds of tools that we can use. They also can be updated to multi-sport applications if we choose. They can be updated to where it's a simulator where you're actually shooting, like skeet or trap. And there's just all different opportunities available to us here. If we have a rainout on a Saturday or a Sunday or during a tournament, it's all right, stay in, we'll get the big-screen TVs going, hit some balls on the simulator. Think about winter leagues. How many golfers we could have out there every night of the week golfing a winter league on a simulator? I handed, or Patrick helped me hand out kind of a little article. It just talks about the future of golf, and it talks about a lot of technology. Some things that we have coming up, I guess going back to the space issue, is we need a space that we can comfortably seat 100 to 200 people for larger events and tournaments. What we have coming up just in the next year is this year, this fall, we're hosting Conference Girls Golf. We are very possibly hosting Girls District Golf at Jack Rabbit for Class B. And in the spring of '25, we are the host site for the Class C Boys State Golf Tournament. I have no kitchen, so everything I do right now, I do with roasters and crockpots and a grill, and I have a hot dog roller and a sandwich station. I can make you a mean pulled pork and cheesy potatoes, but I'm pretty limited with what I have as far as banquets and event spacing as well. So in the article that I gave you, back to technology, the National Golf Foundation says that the current split is 50/50 in terms of off-course and on-course golf. With off-course increasing, 80% of people that start with indoor golf, they move onward. Technology is evolving, and it's all around us. So everybody is not just comfortable with technology, they expect it. And if you think about the younger people in the community, it's all about technology. They have it right in front of them in their hand all day, every day. What it comes down to is that you hired Landscapes Golf Management to successfully manage Jack Rabbit Run. And I think our performance over the last four years has proven that we've been very successful in accomplishing that goal. As an expert management company in the golf business, we are telling you that a new clubhouse facility with additional revenue sources presented today is a necessary investment in order to keep Jack Rabbit Run on its current prosperous path. And I'd like to end, if I could, with a quote from Tom Everett, and he's the president of Landscapes Golf Management. I think that you met him, this was before I was involved with the course, but when you were negotiating the contract for management of the course. "In November of 2020, we made a promise to the city of Grand Island to improve the operations and fiscal performance of Jack Rabbit Run Golf Course. We hope you unequivocally agree that nearly four years later, we have successfully delivered on that promise. The future is bright for Grand Island, as evidenced by the recent Good Life District designation. As we present the 2025 fiscal year budget, we urge you to strongly consider our capital plan for city investment to ensure that Jack Rabbit Run remains a strong city amenity. We believe clubhouse replacement, while requiring significant capital investment, will provide stronger financial returns to the city, and we anticipate delivering on this promise, too. We look forward to continuing to serve the city for many years to come. Respectfully, Tom Everett."
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Phil Sedana, I appreciate everything you've done to present, because I think you've done a great job of presenting where we're really at, where we've been, and where we need to go. And I just, I'm grateful for that part. I think we have a lot of discussion to do about what's next, and I don't really know what's in the budget besides what you've presented, but thank you for your part.
Thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
Sedana, I learned to appreciate you and Joel a whole lot more here when I got a chance to meet with you guys the other day. Mike and I got to go out and visit with them. And I see you every year come up and do your spiel here, and that's one thing. But to actually get to sit down and talk with you and just your vast knowledge and your passion, Joel's experience here, all of these things come together to give us a huge overload of information tonight that's just like, holy cow, where do we go with all this? But it's stuff that you have to know. This reminds me, many years ago, when we had people coming before us through Public Works, and we've got sewers that need replaced, and it's going to cost a bazillion dollars to do it, but we got to do it. You brought up a lot of things tonight that we have to, if we're going to continue to have a city golf course, that we have to make plans to address. It's got to be done. I like your visuals, I like the pictures, those are worth thousands of words, and it makes a big impact. Now, the question is, how do we do it? How do we get there? This is a multi-year project, hundreds of thousands, probably millions of dollars, that we have to figure out how to do. My question to you, as you went through the presentation, just kind of your gut feel on this, when you talked about including Friday into your weekend, do you think it's going to turn off golfers? Or do you think they're just going to say, "Hey, we love this, we're going to pay a little premium price to play on a Friday anyway"? With the people that you see, what do you think?
I honestly don't think it's going to deter any golfers. We're seeing so many more public golfers coming to the course now, and a lot of those are on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Of course, we value our pass holders and love having our pass holders come out. Those are a lot of your league players. And then they're coming out occasionally throughout the week as well. But when I see the color green on my tee sheet, that's the color for public golf. And making Friday be $2 or $3 higher than a Saturday, or make it the same as Saturday and Sunday, so it's higher than Thursday. Generally, when they're coming, they're on vacation on a Friday. It's also the same Indian Heads Weekend is Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So I think that we're also just being consistent with that. Our Fridays have been crazy busy doing well over 200 rounds. We could really help generate some revenue by doing that.
The other question I have will be, I don't know if Laura, or Patrick, or the mayor... The other question I have will be, I don't know if Laura, or Patrick, or the mayor, whoever would be the one, we're talking about that airport lease, which is pretty important. That's the other part I really liked about meeting with you personally, your vision, you're looking down the road, because we have to answer questions that are coming due a year and a half from now, that help us make decisions today. That's one of the things I'd appreciate about your business savvy, the things, you're the kind of manager that you want to manage a business, whether it's a golf course or anything else you've got. You're asking the right questions, you're looking ahead. That's one of the things that I really appreciate about getting to know you and your ability to manage that course. When can we start negotiations on something like that, to get that question answered? The answer, probably the obvious answer is yes, we'll continue a lease.
Well, I would suggest sooner rather than later. So it was a 20-year lease, started in 2006, and then it was $15,700, and it had a 3% increase every year. So currently, it's at $28,000.
Right.
So with the, you know, I guess, in my opinion, you know, if we want to hook up, you know, water, sewer, everything else, you know, this is a good time to say, hey, let's renew the lease, but, you know, we're improving the land as well, so would the airport authority, you know, give us a break of some sort? So I think this would be a great time for that.
When you say this would be a great time, like within two months, or three months, or?
Within this fiscal year.
Within the, this fiscal year, or the next?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, within that 12-month?
I would say right after the first of the year.
Okay, well, that sounds good, and I think you've got to get those ducks in a row to know what you're going to do. That's a nice segue about city sewer and water, because that brings up another question that I have. To me, as I look at the, not just the condition of, well, I'm thinking about irrigation, but I'm thinking also about the septic system, which is 48 years.
Forty-eight years.
Forty-year life cycle typically. We have the ability to hook up to city sewer. But when I think of the cost, and I did ask Keith at the beginning of the meeting, and I know he doesn't have a number nor shitty, but I just asked him about, you know, how big a deal is it to get out there? And I don't know if we need to dig into those weeds yet. But as I just think about the size of a septic system versus hooking to city sewer, it seems to me like it's going to be a heck of a lot cheaper to replace some septic tanks than it would to go into a city sewer for something like that. That's what I'm thinking at 20,000-foot level. Keith, what are your feelings about something like that versus what we would have to do to hook up to city sewer? Water's a different question, but the sewer?
It's going to be a cost-benefit thing, I believe. Obviously, we've gotten a lot of life out of the existing system. I think some of the factors that you're going to be looking at, too, is what we have available, and how far away it is. Again, maybe not getting into the weeds too much, but the closest thing we have out there is a forest main that actually runs up to the helicopter base. So it's not as simple as just pumping over to that. You got to design into the system the operation of the helicopter base, and making those things work together. We've got some head loss, and those kind of things that will have to be considered when we look at that. So yeah, again, it kind of maybe depends upon how long of lease you have, if you have any other big spaces being added before you make that kind of an investment. You know, all of those factors would come into that decision, I would say.
Okay, so, and it's going to be costly. Septic systems, I have a very limited knowledge of for residential businesses, or residential application, but I don't know how this would be, but typically, I'm thinking you're looking at 50 grand, maybe max, something like that. I don't know, to replace this?
I think for a residential system, that's probably high.
No, I'm talking about thinking about this one, which?
For this one, again, I think it depends upon what the overall plan is, how big of a, if you're looking at a bigger space, higher occupancy loads, all of those things are going to play into that design as well. So before you would get into that kind of thing, you might want to look at the bigger picture to kind of plan all of this, so it makes sense.
Okay.
If it stays the way it is, maybe what they have now, just new, would be a better option, but, you know, a lot of different variables.
Okay, well, thank you for your input on that, too. Then we talk about the irrigation system. Obviously, pictures, again, tell the story. How do we budget? How do you budget? How are we budgeting catastrophic failures like this? How are we covering those costs? Are we budgeting with intentional expectation that we're going to have to do that, or is it just, we're just going, we got to bite the bullet when it happens? How's that all come together?
So in fiscal year 2023, we were actually pretty lucky. As far as irrigation issues, they were minimal. We have more than made up for it this year. So we are over-budget on our irrigation repairs, and we have upped the budget amount in our irrigation repairs for fiscal year 2025. That's, again, another thing, that just expenses are going up. It's 48-year-old pipe that's cracking. The glue isn't sticking anymore. But again, it's one of those things, too. If we have a catastrophic failure on the golf course, I really don't have a choice except to spend the money to fix it. If I go over budget, I go over budget, because if I don't have a golf course, then I don't have any revenue coming in. So we are trying, but again, anticipating this is, it's kind of a crapshoot of what's, something is going to fail. The question is, what's going to fail next, and how significant or catastrophic is it going to be? And please let it happen during the day when somebody is there.
And finally, this question will go to Patrick, or the mayor, or whoever's been involved in some of these discussions. A lot of this budget stuff has already been seen before we've seen it, and I'm just curious from, if you guys have seen a lot of this already before, has there been some decisions as far as what you feel comfortable with funding this year? Or have we got to that point yet? And if not, when do we sort through that?
So we had a meeting with Sedana. She came in and went over basically her presentation this evening, and the question was, what do you need now? You know, because we do have this lease coming. So in the past, it's been usually about $100,000 that we've allocated for Jack Rabbit Run. So this year, we've actually upped it to $300,000, and that should cover most of what she's like, hey, I need this now. So that's what we're going to present to council for Jack Rabbit.
Okay, sounds fair. I mean, I don't know if you think it's fair, but it sounds like a lot bigger than $100,000, so that's a positive thing.
I mean, it definitely will meet some needs that we have. It doesn't do really anything as far as the opportunities that I've presented to you and the current clubhouse facility, the irrigation issues. These are just things, like we talked about a concrete pad, and replacing cart paths, and although, I am very appreciative, but that is why I put that radar slide up there, so you know what we're looking at going forward.
Yeah, and I think that a simulator would be a great addition, but as I was there, as dumb as I am, I'm thinking, we'll just take this much space. And you said, you can't swing a club in this thing, you're going to hit the ceiling. Well, why? I'm going to just give them a short club. But no, you got to think about the ceiling height. You got to think of all these things. You just can't put a simulator up and start smacking balls. So you're talking about an addition with a higher ceiling, if that, you know, what's the payback on that? So these are all big decisions that have to be made, but they have to be funded, and how are they going to be funded? And we had that discussion when you and I and Mike and Joel worked together, just how do you do that? But I will tell you, I haven't been, I hate to tell you this, I haven't been to the golf course in probably 12 or 13 years, but it was the most beautiful I ever remember seeing it, and the deep greens that you guys have there, the deep green color, not just the greens, but it was just gorgeous on that day, and we saw people out having a lot of fun golfing. The clubhouse looks totally different than I remember it, totally different. Somehow, it even seems like there was more light in there. I don't know if that was anything that you did, but it just seemed brighter, bigger. It wasn't bigger, but it just seemed bigger. Great job, excellent job with what you've done. You're the right kind of manager for that course, and I wish we could just write you a check for $10 million right now and say, go spend it, but just, that just ain't going to happen. But we can chip away at what we can, and we've got to deal with the things that are very important now, and look at those long-term plans. I don't have an answer for you. I don't know if anybody here has an answer for you. But it is an excellent course, and it is a public golf course, so we've got to keep that in mind. And one of these days, I might go out and swing a club again if I don't hurt myself. I might try that. All right, thank you.
Again, really, the credit goes to my staff. I couldn't do any of this without them supporting me, and their very hard work. I appreciate your time and your listening. I know that you have difficult decisions to make, and I wish that I did not have to present you with these types of items, but unfortunately, it's the reality, and I just wanted it to be on your radar, so you knew what we were battling going forward.
Have you prepared a pro versus con analysis of leasing versus buying, along with Landscapes' recommendation?
I mean, Landscapes has a leasing division, and that's where we're going to be leasing our next cart fleet through that I spoke about. That is where we currently lease the maintenance equipment. We did a five-year lease when Landscapes first came in, so that is through that leasing program. So again, leasing has the benefits of you don't have that one-time capital outlay, you're making payments over five years, you have newer equipment always on hand, so you have less repair costs, but it affects the bottom line. So that's the con to leasing. You also don't have any equity in this equipment, really much to say. Then, as far as your purchasing goes, it becomes an asset of the city, so it does not affect the bottom line if it's a one-time capital outlay to purchase these items. But then you also have to make sure, if you commit to purchasing, you have to keep that equipment. Maybe you don't have to trade it in in five years like you would on a lease, and maybe that piece of equipment can last eight years. But a mower is not going to last 12, 15, 30 years. So if we're going to make a commitment to purchase, we have to stick with the commitment to keep the equipment up to date, so we can service the course and service the public.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. Looking at the future, what you want us to do, the architect that you paid $10,000 for, and you put in all the bells and whistles, did he give you a number?
So the number with the grand, I said, like, give me big, is $10 million.
$10 million.
I said, take off mini golf, take out pickleball courts, give me a nice pro shop, give me a breezeway, that we have a cart barn to protect our carts, give me a snack bar area, and give me a banquet area large enough for what I need, that I also can section off into smaller areas. You're about $6 million. That number includes the utilities that we're talking about. So it includes, we talked about hooking up to city sewer and water, we talked about those items. Our current deck, the condition of it, is it's very much nearing the end of its life. It would include a new deck space. You know, pricing, like, city sewer and water, $80,000. City sewer, $250,000. Construction of a cart shed, $370,000. And removal of the old deck and construction of a new deck is $105,000. So those four things are $805,000. Those would be included in, if we decided to go the route to build a new clubhouse.
I'd buy 27,000 rounds. Just charge $22 more a round, and you got it.
We have a competitor that is charging close to $22 more dollars a round than what we're charging, but...
What is a round of golf, just so I know?
So like...
18 holes and a card on a Saturday. All right. Well, I appreciate your presentation and knowing what the target is.
Thank you.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. So Pat, I want to just respond to your $300,000 number that's in the budget. You know, I think the concept that this is break even, I mean, I think Sedana said is that this is year four, you know, and we're at a break-even point. That's really where the, some of these things are revenue generators, as Sedana put out there, but the $300,000 would be gone with the irrigation system break, because we spent a lot more than that just putting, fixing it before, you know? And so it's one of those that I think you could go through 300 grand in a hurry without doing any improvements at all. The simulator was one of those that I like the idea, because it's one of those that utilizes an existing facility during the times that it's not being utilized. And you can also utilize it during other times as well, but it's something that brings people out there in December, January, and February, and March. You know, and as much as my family likes top golf in certain places, this is very close. I've been on simulator golf leagues where 50-some people pay several hundred dollars to play in a simulator golf league, and it only goes for six weeks or whatever in January and February. Then they have another one from February to April, and so you could run multiple leagues. Sedana's added a fall league to there, so, you know, again, you're doing things necessary to increase the rounds, to do everything you can to meet the customer demand, but the simulator is one of those things that I thought, regardless of what we do with the facility, this is a game-changer to take it from a break-even, lose a little money, $100,000, whatever the loss is, and I think you could make it a positive facility, one that is self-sustaining without support, you know? And so I like the idea of the simulator, and I'd just point out that the $300,000 ain't going to last very long with an irrigation system, you know, like that, so.
Simulator research that Landscapes has done is similar properties to ours have generated between $72,000 and $100,000 in just revenue, just for renting the simulator space. That's not food, that's not beverage, that's not merchandise. If we, for example, went top-of-the-line simulators, we could have those, with that type of money for rental, we could have those units completely paid for in two years. The issue is, is that I can't put them in my current space, because my ceiling's not high enough. It would need a different, it would either need an addition onto our current facility that could hold those simulators, or it would need a new facility.
Yeah, my brother-in-law put in a simulator in a bar that he owned in Curtis, Nebraska, and I can tell you, it's a little college town, and for the ag college, and he did a great business with it. He just had one. I think Grand Island would have, could support easily three. But in addition to the simulators, they can have games in the back. I mean, there's other things that they can do with televisions, that you can do with game-playing as well, that attracts different crowds. But again, we're talking about attracting them to a facility that's not in use half the year. You're trying to find out, how do you get it in use for the other half of the year? And how do you make it where the community actually wants to come out and do these things? These are things that are good for the community, so thanks, Sedana.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 4C, Fiscal Year 2025, Heartland Public Shooting Park Budget Proposal. Mr. McCoy, please introduce your presenters.
Yes, I have a pleasure to introduce Neil Davies and his crew, there's Tom Bush, to present the shooting park budget.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for making time for us tonight. Neil Davies, Marketing Director at Hornady. Tom Bush, Manager of the Heartland Public Shooting Park. Also with us is Steve Hornady, who doesn't need much of an introduction, and Carla Nolan, who is the CFO for Hornady and our operations at the Heartland Public Shooting Park. So we're here tonight for a capital funding request in order to preserve, protect, and maintain the city property out at the shooting park to position the park for growth. That is our goal. The Heartland Public Shooting Park has become a destination location for the shooting sports, not just in Nebraska, but in the region. We host several national-level events at the park, as well as some major regional events as well. The funding goals, enhance the function of previously neglected aspects of the park. We have some user safety issues to chat about, and to elevate the participant experience. There's some safety concerns, asset protection, and then also refine some of the aesthetics to enhance that user experience and bring people back to the park. This is the budget as of 2023. You can see where the city was, with a total cash flow loss of approximately $340,000. So Hornady operate in that park, saves the city $340,000 per year. You can see the clause in our contract there for the maintenance services, the major repairs to facilities and real estate should be a capital expenditure that's agreed on by both parties, Hornady and the city. You can see the Hornady investment in the shooting park since January of this year alone. Our total operating loss is $335-plus thousand. You can see that broken down there and itemized. We funded an installation of a brand-new well at the facility, so we'd have potable water at the headquarters building. We also had an air conditioning unit that went down. We also had an air conditioning unit that went down that we repaired. We did come back to the city to help us with that. So all in all, we're, we're fulfilling our promise to the city of Grand Island and investing in the shooting park and the city. We knew what we were getting ourselves into and we began this process. But we're very much interested in, in doing everything we can for the shooting sports in Grand Island, in the state, in the region, in the country, and in the world, quite frankly. You can see some of the economic impact data that we have here. Diane Rosse is in the back here. We got much of this information from Brad Melama at the Grand Island Tourism Department. So these are two of our major events. So the 4H Shooting Sports Event happens here every year. Tom can kind of touch on some of the attendees and, and what we had here regarding states that, that come to this event. So the numbers, 3,500 attendees. You can see the total business sales to the city of Grand Island, close to $2.3 million. The other big event that we hosted this year was the zombie match, which is a big multi-gun match that we host. 1,500 attendees and total business sales to the city of Grand Island, 403,000. Last 12-month metrics, had 47,100 people at the shooting park. And again, I'll, I'll let Tom just kind of touch on the 4H Shooting Sports Event because it's, it's a, it's a pretty amazing thing that the city hosts every year.
So we've been pretty fortunate. I think this was the 24th year for the 4H Shooting Sports. So we have hosted it, I think, pretty much exclusively since 2014 here in Grand Island. So this year we had 708 kids from 40 different states. So with those guys, you bring grandmas and grandpas and moms and dads and brothers and sisters. So that brings a lot of heads and beds for the events that we have. And I, I, I think it's one of the coolest things is because they have an opening and closing ceremony, a lot like what you'd see at the Olympics. So these kids all gather together and they do an opening ceremony, they do an award ceremony, they do a closing ceremony. Brad and Diane set up a, a really cool, it was kind of like here GI, they did it for, they did it for the 4H kids, so they did it down that rail, railside area. And that was a real big hit for them. So we're bringing in folks from 40 different states. We've had, we've had folks come out here this year that have been coming here since they started doing this, a lot of the CROs, the, the Chief Range Officers for these different disciplines and stuff that come out. And they've just been absolutely ecstatic about the, the stuff that we're starting to add and just the, the cleanliness of the park and removing some of the junk piles and the tree piles and stuff that's been laying around. They've really enjoyed that. These guys fired, I don't remember what I, for a competition, I think they, there was in between here and the Heartland Event Center where they do the air rifle stuff, I think the kids fired four score. Something like 240,000 different projectiles went down range in that, in that course of that week. This is the only time that we closed the park down to the public. Because of the size of that event and how many different events they have going on, we cannot cater to the public for that week. We just had state skeet this last weekend. We still have traps open, we still have sporting clays open. The, the public bays are still open, but when it comes to the 4H Nationals, we do have to, we do have to close down. One of the things with 4H Nationals, you'll see here in a little bit, this, this is growing, their numbers are starting to come up. And they shoot a, they shoot a discipline called silhouette, so they have to shoot out to 100 yards. So that is one of the reasons for our deal is that is becoming a really big, big project for them. And so what we have to do is we have to shoot into the, what we call the action bays. We actually have to stretch those guys almost all the way out to the road. I'll show you in some pictures here in a little bit. So it can, it, it, it congests a little bit, so it, it, it makes it seem like there's, there's more going on than what there is. Diane came out during, it was one of the last days of competition and got to see what we can do or what our capabilities are at, at, at full capacity like that, so. The other one is the zombie match. That one, we catch people from about 38 states, so we're not quite as big as what, what those other ones are. But we catch folks that come back for this. This would have been our 12th annual event for the, for the zombie match. We also run the Area 3 Match for USPSA and a bunch of other things as well.
Yeah, and just this past weekend or maybe two weeks ago, there was a memorial shoot for Wild Gilder Sleeve and people from all over the state, other states, Kansas, things like that come to the, come to the range. And as you can see here, this is kind of final note here in this slide, we're in the final running. I think we're just a signature away from being the host location for the Cornhusker State Games Shooting Competitions, which equals more visitors, more tourism dollars. And to quote Brad Melama, you know, "Grand Island is a shooting sports town. We are a vibrant shooting sports community." So safety, function, aesthetics, some of the things to address. We've got some user safety issues to talk about that will ultimately, you know, keep people safe, but also help with that participant experience and the safety concerns. We've got water damage, trap and skeet controllers, and electrical wiring issues. Some other things, asset protection. We have a bunch of non-operational rusted doors on the trap and skeet, or on the skeet houses. There's some aesthetics that we could refine. The shotgun sports are the marquee, most-used section of the park. This is what people, you know, we got people from all over the country that come to use this facility. We have an international bunker trap that is, I think, the only one between what, Chicago and maybe Denver, so it is...
The western slope. You gotta get to the other side of Denver.
To Grand Junction, I suppose, somewhere in that area. But operable doors and electrical repairs will enable the park to attract more customers. The big one is trying to have more registered shoots. Tom, can you touch on that maybe a little bit?
The registered shoots things is, is a really big thing. That is where we start drawing in these people from other areas, other areas of the country, not just other areas of the state. So like this last weekend, we hosted the Nebraska State Skeet Shoot. So that brings in guys from Colorado, Kansas, Oklahoma, Iowa. That brings, brings folks in here and it ties them to Grand Island for three days. Talking with the, with the guys that run all the registered stuff, the, these associations, bringing in and updating our traps and getting it to where we can throw a registered trap, having our registered skeet. So that puts us in line for the zone, which travels around every few years. It goes to Ohio will host it, Michigan will host it, Nebraska will be able to host it. We haven't had it for a number of years. And with the way the facilities are starting to, to shape up now, they're really interested in us hosting the, the zone shoot again. They're also, I talked to the military folks and they're really, really interested in us running the military shoot. It's a skeet shoot and that once again brings in people from, that are going to be hours and hours away. So it's not, we're not bringing in somebody just from Kearney that's going to stay for the day. They're not going to spend any money in Grand Island and then they're going to go back home. These guys are going to be traveling in. That is a week-long event. That'll run from a Friday through a Sunday. So it'll run Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all the way through that next week that we get to put people in the greater Grand Island area to spend money in the, spend money in, you know, with hotels and in the restaurants. So the registered thing, if we can throw more of that, it brings more traction or more people back to the Grand Island area.
Well, are you capable of, as you say, throwing more registered events? Or is there something lacking that stops you from doing that?
What kind of stopped us before was communication with these venues and then the amount of folks that we had available to help support them. So like with the state and skeet thing, it happened right at the, right at, right as school was starting to, to spool up. So I had all my high school kids still that were able to pull and score. And that, that's a crucial deal. With the arms forces shoot, one of the things that they're looking at that they don't think we're quite big enough for is our ability to, how many RVs or campers we can host on property. But with everything that's over at Foner Park, they, they say that that's well within their bounds and they're, they're willing to, willing to work with us on that.
But some of the issues we face, you can see here, this is a water damage trap and skeet controllers. So there's some equipment that's kind of derelict, just, you know, deferred maintenance that needs to be accomplished out there. So the way that they're sitting there, it's, it's not a video, but as you can see, there's a key right here. Well, water pours out of that thing. So we run the risk of a complete shutdown of that trap, if not possible, serious injury from the water and the electricity. Again, the trap and skeet houses, these, this is the marquee attraction at the shooting park. Look, it's used by all the local and most of surrounding community high schools. We also have the Hastings College that comes in there for training, competition. We have a lot of people that use it to, to, to tool up right before they go to the state shooting Donafin. It's an immense regional, it has immense regional potential, but it's something that has got to be enhanced and maintained in order to keep these people coming back.
What kind of enhancements are you proposing?
Right now, it's mostly just doing some of this deferred maintenance. These are the big issues we've got to have. So it's operational and we can rely on it, so it's not broken down and we have to sit there and repair things on the fly. Big one right here is the trap and skeet houses. You can see there's, again, it's just neglected maintenance and warranty work. So from what I understand, the majority of these were donated to the facility a long time ago. Well, unfortunately, some of the things weren't put in place in the initial contract or in the initial build of these skeet houses. So there's not a lot of water protection over the doors. There's also poor drainage in the concrete that you can see there. So you see on the bottom door, there's a tremendous amount of rust. So there's, you know, door deterioration, we get water intrusion, we get snow. Just the way that the concrete is, is sloped causes some, causes us some issues there. Then we also have water that intrudes inside of that space. We've got clays in there and all that moisture is just not good for any of the clays or the equipment that's in the houses. There's also no drip edge that's above the bottom doors. So if there's any rain that hits the wall of that structure, it's just going to leak down and then slip right inside of the, inside of that bottom door as well. So there's 12 doors that need to be repaired and 15 doors total that need to be replaced. Here you can see another image on the bottom left. So that's one of the trap, or yeah, it's a skeet house. The entire wall is missing, so it's just held in place by a piece of plywood. Aesthetically, doesn't look good. Obviously doesn't allow, it, it, it stops nothing from getting in there. We've got issues with vermin, we've got moisture, and you can see that the clay's sitting in there, all those things get moisture. And now we have problems with the clays that we, that break when you're starting to throw them. But yeah, again, another one on the bottom right, you can just see that those doors, a lot of rust. There's not a threshold on any of them and unfortunately there's no gutters anywhere. That's kind of a theme throughout the park, no gutters, no good drainage. It's interesting. So the door structures and electrical repair and that low voltage storage box, the total funding request for that, 195,983 and change. Another thing we have at the park, there's a residential house. This is the first structure you see when you come into the park. It's, it's, it's right there once you get past the gate. Our plan is to use this for these 4H officials and other match directors. And quite frankly, it's an invaluable asset that we can use to entice adjunct instructors and mobile training courses to come to the park to hold classes because they're going to get accommodations on-site that keeps them close to the range and it also takes a lot of the cost out of them. They don't have to go stay in a hotel. They can cook there. They can take care of all that stuff. Tom, why don't you just talk a little bit more about what that would provide us?
So that house is awesome. We threw some staff in it and it keeps guys local. So anybody that's running stats, if they're the event coordinators, they can, they have their own little headquarters that's away from everything else. So they've got their own little space that they can, you know, that they can sit down and relax, that they have the wifi capability of, of updating scores or looking at their squatting matrix or whatever it is that they need to have. We threw some staff in it and it worked out really well. I believe that house went in in 2005, talking with John Swanson. I think he did the, the initial plumbing with that house. So that went in in 2005 and the basement had never been touched. Nobody, they, they never, they never finished the basement. So I think we have a really good untapped resource there. When we can bring in some of these high-class shooters to put on clinics, whether that's for the high school kids or just the general public and, or for even for law enforcement, we can bring these guys in. It helps cut our costs down if we have a location for them to stay. So we've got a place right there for them on the range. They can cook their own food. They can sit and relax. They can prep all their equipment. They, they've got storage facilities. We had OSG out here. We stored some of their...
It's an outdoor sportsman's group, so it's the company that owns Guns and Ammo Magazine, Shooting Times, Rifle Shooter, Peterson's Hunting. They also own Outdoor Channel, Sportsman's Channel, and the World Fishing Network. It's owned by Stan Kronke, who owns a few other things like the, what, Denver Nuggets and the Los Angeles Rams, but yeah, they're a big company.
They came out and they shot, basically they shot a half a season's worth of footage out there at Heartland Public Shooting Park this year in a week. And having that garage there for them, we were able to secure and lock up all of their digital equipment that they were using to film, film these shows. It also gave them a staging point. We had a day where there was some rain, so they went back and kind of revamped and, and looked at what they wanted to do and how they were going to make it happen with the incremental weather. So it was a great spot for them as well. I think it's a, I, I think we have to do something to it. I think we need to bring it back up to where it's at. We've got some mold hitters, mold issues. We've got no gutters on the house. The AC unit, we'll show you a picture over here shortly, is worn out. Siding's got damaged. It's, everything's weathered, deteriorated. The interior updates, flooring, lighting. Once again, it was put in 2005, so I mean, it's not that it's falling in, it's just, it just needs love. It just needs that, 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 that little bit of update.
And the people that would be housed here, you know, these matches start really early in the morning, usually 7:00, 7:30 in the morning. The, the folks that are running any of these courses or matches, they come in before that and they're there till dark. So anything we can do to alleviate some of the pain for them is ultimately good for the park and good for the city. You can see some of the water intrusion here. That's the front porch. You know, I've, I've done a few construction things in my life, but it sure looks like maybe the ground wasn't prepared right and there's been some settling and water damages. You can see the porch has kind of moved away from the house. And then the concrete has settled there, so now you have a grade that goes right back to the house. So you just end up with more and more water getting into the house. This is the AC unit. Should be on those blocks presumably. A few other issues with that. I don't know if it can keep up. The fins look pretty well damaged. The siding, this, these are just a couple of select photos, but it, it, it looks a lot worse than this in that garage. I don't know what exactly happened to it, but there's siding that's, or the wrap on the top is completely missing and there's a lot of holes in the siding. You can see here on the interior, some of the electrical issues. That's just one example. And then you've got this water damage in one of the ceilings. And then to the right is in the washer dryer area.
Kitchen.
Oh, that's the kitchen, I'm sorry. So you can see there's obviously some water problems in there. The house repair project, preliminary estimate is $100,000 to get started with this project. Another one is the shooting bay expansion. So this is a facility expansion project just to get us to be able to meet current demand. This is what Tom was talking about with the, I think, small bore shooters for 4H. So this accommodates that 4H growth, helps us to remain relevant and eases the traffic congestion. The way it works now is we have to block off the road that's to the current, well, I'll show you a photo in just a moment that might make more sense. But this just ultimately helps us catch up with current demand. So as you see in this photograph here, you see all the cars that are parked there. I believe this is the zombie match. So that's a, we, we run that match in two kind of relays, so there's a morning relay and an afternoon relay. But that's just an example of how many people come out to shoot at any of these big events. So those bays that you can see there that are with the grass and the big berm in the back. What happens is we shut down that road, so none of those cars and obviously anything else are there. And then the shooters themselves have to shoot from kind of where those cars are parked. And we have to block all that off and we use shipping containers to block that off just to keep it safe so nobody can drive in there. Go ahead and talk about that maybe.
So what we'd like to do, and I think Todd had even brought this up a couple of years before, they had talked about it, was doing a bay expansion off to the north end. So everything that's highlighted in red, that would take us all the way out to the property line out there towards Alder Road. And we could probably put in two bays that are about 200, 220 yards in length. So that would help accommodate all those small bore shooters from 4H Nationals. It would definitely increase the capabilities. We've talked with USPSA, which is the United States Practical Shooting Association, probably the largest shooting association in the world. And we've tried to draw their multi-gun nationals and just a, an open nationals. They, they run multiple nationals a year. They break it down into different sections. But with that expansion, we'd be able to host multi-gun nationals, which runs for four days, which would also bring about another 450 people, just competitors, back to the Grand Island area. And once again, we tie them to the Grand Island area for another four days. So having that would increase our ability to host more kids for the small bore stuff for 4H Nationals, allow the growth that we're starting to see with them guys. It would also increase the number of events that we could run in, in any given year.
Funding request for that, the preliminary request total is $50,000. It's going to just be dirt work essentially that we're going to run through there to create those berms. So here's the synopsis. The door structures, electrical repairs, you can see, 195,000. The house, approximately 100,000, and then the shooting bay expansion at 50,000. So there's the grand total, 345,983. This will help us bring the park up to speed to get us to where, we've got some facilities that are going to work well and are reliable, that we don't have to go out and do repairs on, on sometimes a daily basis. The, the door issue on the, on the skeet fields is a, is a, is a big issue, quite frankly, as is the electrical problem. But at Hornady, we're wholly committed to the park. We are, we are invested in this. We're invested in furthering shooting sports locally, regionally, everywhere. And this is a great opportunity for us to, to do it at a local level.
Mr. Sheard, do you have a question?
Kind of a comment on everything so far. Neil, it's kind of cool to watch you be so passionate about this, both of you guys. It's...
Lives it every day, so. Like he hasn't had a day off this whole week, as a matter of fact.
No, I might like day 14.
Yeah.
I got a mean boss.
Yeah.
He's the one telling me to take a day off.
Well, you know, I think when we agreed to this partnership, the city and Hornady, this is what, I mean, this is... this is what, I mean, this is what we wanted to see. You talked about these different shows that building this capacity could get us. How full could you get the calendar? Like what is practical for you guys?
Ideally, what I'd like to see in the next four to five years is we have something every weekend at the park. From that shooting timeframe, so that March, April through late October, first part of November, I would like to have some sort of event, whether that's a registered trap, skeet, sporting clay, whether that's a youth, the Nebraska, we call it YESS, it's the Youth Educational Shooting Sports. We're trying to expand on that. Currently, they only do a spring program where they come out. So it's like shooting out at Donaupin, but out at Donaupin, they only shoot trap. So we run about the same time that they run and we run trap, skeet, and sporting. They come in on a Saturday, they start at 8:00 AM, they're done by 3:00. But they only run in the spring. So we're trying to add a fall league with that, whether that's sporting clays or doing some rimfire shooting with those guys. But in between all the different things that we can host, I'd like to see something about at least three out of the four weeks out of every month.
What are you now, you think, on average?
Right now, we're probably about two a month. Some of these other ones are smaller. You know, we're just kind of getting them up off the ground. That Wyatt Gildersleeve Memorial, this is going to become a yearly event. We were hoping for 100 people. We had 177. We had slotted for five fields to be open with a sixth one on standby, and I was standing over Travis Erickson's shoulder as he was inputting everybody into the computer to get them squatted. And I called Jeremy Fulton, he's my shotgun manager, and I was like, we got to get the other fields open. So in about, and before we started, he had those other three fields ready to go. So that's an event that is going to start to be put on the calendar. Wasn't there prior to. We've talked with the tactical games, they're coming out next year for a skirmish. So that's another event that we've never hosted here. And that'll bring people in for two days. It's not quite our four-day event, but we're working towards that with other people. We need to open up the possibilities of the shooting sports stuff that we're doing. We need to work a little bit more with the Tri-City Archers and host more archery stuff as well. The big thing with Brad and Diane with the Cornhusker State Games, that's a huge one. That is something that we don't have and now you're running, now you're bringing folks to the greater Grand Island area for two separate weekends. That's something that was never on the calendar before and we hope to put it on the calendar and hope to keep it on the calendar for years to come.
How much, you know, looking to see pictures of a house with mold in it and things like that kind of give you a little bit of a, wow, those are some things that need to get done, obviously. How much do you rely on this $350,000 of investment to get more of those? Like how crucial is this to that growth?
Everything we've mentioned here tonight has to be worked on, everything. There's other projects that we're undertaking ourselves. The International Bunker Trap Facility, we have issues with water and things like that. We're going to be dealing with the contractor directly on that ourselves to see what we can accomplish. So there's plenty more things that we're doing that we're not coming to the city council about at all. That's just one issue, there's plenty more going on. But if you come out there, we'd love to have you. You can see, if you've been out there in the past, you'll see that Tom, look, we've added a lot more people to the facility. We had a slew of part-time people, college kids, high school kids that came out there and worked this year. We had paintbrushes rocking and rolling all over that place. So it's spick and span and it's quite frankly due to Tom and his efforts and that of everybody that's working out there.
I think we went through about 60 gallons of paint and almost 30 gallons of stain.
Had to slow a couple of kids down, they weren't too good. Yeah, had more paint on themselves than they had on what they needed to paint. But we had a great group of kids out there, a great group of people. We've got part-timers now. We're fully staffed at this point in time and we've kind of gone through the majority of the first cycle. It'll probably start slowing down maybe later this fall and then we could start tackling some more of these projects ourselves.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation and again, all the excitement you bring to it and the reputation that obviously helps recruit nationally. It's good for Grand Island. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Hawes.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I thought it was awesome. I think our partnership with Hornet has been exactly and maybe even more than I had anticipated. But I'm glad to see you guys pointing out everything that you're pointing out, you're bringing to us, how do we make it better? How do we make it bigger? How do we, you know, do more tourism? And that's what this is all about. This facility is one of the best in the area, you know, and I think I can support easily the 300 and some thousand you're asking for tonight. So thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Nickerson.
I too'd like to thank you for the presentation and the very opening statement that you made got my attention. You said, "We have to preserve, protect, and maintain." That's what it's all about. And I'm actually embarrassed that we, as a city, haven't done a better job of that over the years. But we have to know what we don't know and you're sharing that with us. And I think that's something that we have to do in Sedona's case with the golf course. We've got to know what we don't know. And now we can make good decisions based on that. There is no reason why we should allow things to get in that shape. But we haven't known that until now, or at least some of us didn't. If anybody did, shame on us for not addressing it sooner, but I'm glad that you brought it to us. They're all fixable things. I like where you've made suggestions, we don't necessarily have to replace it, we can repair it, you know, some of those things. We don't have to replace everything, some things just need a little bit of repair. If we own it, we've got to maintain it and I really like that. And Sedona, you can steal that for your next presentation. We've got to preserve, protect, and maintain that. That's a great catchphrase and it's very powerful. I also am impressed with the hand-in-glove approach that you have with the CVB for getting people here for longer periods of time. I think somebody's, you know, got this synergy thing going with the Hornet clout and your expertise and the need to have people here for more than a weekend event from Carney or Hastings or whatever. You're saying, let's bring them into where they've got to stay here. And we're talking about building more hotels. We were all told here a while back that there's 133 nights in Grand Island where you cannot find a hotel room. Well...
4H Nationals is one of those times. Like if you try to get a room, if you were late, if your kid qualified late or you were a little behind the ball on trying to get them prepared, we had people staying all the way over in Carney for 4H Nationals.
Right. So we hope to address that with some additional hotels, at least two that I'm aware of, maybe three. So that's going to help that as well. But the success of this first year, I think, is evident and the progress and, I'm trying to think of a word, momentum maybe is the word I'm looking for, as you continue to move forward is, it looks like the sky's the limit and you guys have done a great job. So I appreciate Hornet taking it on and more so sharing with us the things that we really need to make right so it can even be even better. And I like Chuck, I'm saying that 345 or 350,000 doesn't seem like an unreasonable request to get us where we should have been all along. And I think it sounds very fair. And again, thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Sheard.
Sorry, one last thing. Chief Denny came a couple of weeks ago and gave his presentation, mentioned that Hornet donated some rounds for training. Just wanted to say thanks while you're here. You weren't here that day, so thank you guys.
Yeah, it's our pleasure. And the two dogs, right?
Two dogs.
We're very pleased and proud and happy to be the steward of this facility and we're very interested in seeing it be successful.
Excellent presentation. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Agenda item 4D, Fiscal Year 2025 City Financials Presentation. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So it's kind of hard following all these great presentations, but we're just going to put some numbers to you guys and we'll go from there. So this is just an overview of the general fund, food and beverage tax, and the keynote funds. So 24 revenues are projected to be $1.2 million higher than our budgeted revenues. Our sales tax revenues will fall slightly short of budgeted revenues, however, they are over 23 sales tax revenues by approximately 2%. And we'll show you, I'll show you that later here. Building permits and other revenues are attributable to that higher revenues. Our building permits almost doubled this year. They will, I anticipate those to be fairly high next year with all the building that we have going on. For fiscal year '24, vacancy savings are projected at 2.4 million, of which public safety departments make up most of those vacancy savings. And part of that vacancy savings included health insurance and we are off on our budgeting on our health insurance. So a lot of the departments came in way under our health insurance and so we're making that adjustment in '25. Fiscal year '25 property tax revenues, our tax ask will be the same, $12,086,673. Sales tax revenues are projected at 1.5% growth over forecasted sales tax revenue of 24. So the sales tax revenues, and this is just general fund, are projected to be at 18.2 This does not include anticipated revenues from Target coming and some hotels being built and items like that. I'd like to have those in for a year and then we just go ahead and forecast those in.
Pat, have you been able to determine whether the special session that just passed some changes to local government taxing, is it going to have any effect on the budget that we're looking at?
No, not this year. So we're not asking for any increase in property tax. And what they passed was a 0% growth on valuation. And so we are not anticipating any growth in our property tax. Some of the other items on local option sales tax were not passed, but I'm sure they're going to come back in future sessions. And so we've got to be very mindful of what they are doing. For example, so there is, so the state collects the local option sales tax. And then they charge us a 3% fee in order to collect and remit it to us. Their proposal was, in order to pay for the property tax relief, was upping that 3% to 22%. That would cost us $6 million right off the top. So, and then also limiting our sales tax growth to 1%. So it is, it would, it just doesn't make sense fiscally because you're stopping economic growth and you're taking away the taxpayers, you know, they're the ones who voted in this tax. It is for this community and it wasn't meant for the state. So that remains to be seen on what happens.
You know, on the property tax issue, there was messaging during the special session out of Lincoln that somehow cities and counties were kind of bad actors concerning property tax. People in Grand Island need to understand, we have kept our property tax ask flat for, what, five years?
Five years, yes.
Five years. We've kept the ask flat. We've tried to be very gentle on property taxes here at the city. So I want to push back against that messaging that was coming out of Lincoln that somehow we're the problem. We're not.
I totally agree. Good point, Mayor. You know, and the city has relied on our sales tax. You know, we're growing. We have things going on. And then start to attack our sales taxes, it's kind of crazy.
Pat, I had one more question. So all some of the other language talked about the increase in valuation, not just my house is worth more, but for new houses, a new construction. Does the county able to separate the increase in valuation between real growth and just revaluing the same properties?
The county, yes, the county can, yes. I know they also talked about, I think it passed, is Agland is valued at 75%, residential at 100. And so I think it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, constitutional amendment?
It'd be a constitutional amendment.
Yeah, so where they could adjust the residential valuation or do a different way.
You know, I think I was in favor of being flat because we can't, I could never tell how much was real growth and how much was just revaluing my house again and again and again and again. You know, and so that's one of those, if we are able to separate, you know, I might have different thoughts on that. So, thank you.
So fiscal year '25 personal expense is budgeted for a 3% increase to $41 million from $39,008. This includes the FTEs that were brought forward to you earlier in this budget process that included a sergeant, lieutenant in the police department, a plummy mechanical inspector, a fire captain for training, and moving a part-time admin assistant to a full-time position for community development. Operating expenses is budgeted for a 29% reduction. This is due to last year, we put money aside for Camp Augustine and Fire Station 3. And so there was some leftover funds and we did not spend that. So operating expenses are falling in at $9.8 million. That is in line to historical operating expenses for the general fund, as you'll see later in a spreadsheet. Overall, the 24 budgets within, actually, it's the 25 budgets within $42,490 of the city's fiscal policy. And so the final budget will vary slightly before September 10th, when we finalize the budget, but it will be in line with fiscal policies. General fund projected ending fund balance for '24 is $42.3 million. Cash reserves calculated at 25%. Fiscal policy says in between 20 and 30% with the remaining balance of $28,996 available for one-time projects. These remaining funds could be used for the following and actually recommending this is the Fire Station 3 rebuild in progress, $5.3 million. A ladder truck for the fire department, it is, I think, 19 or 20 years old, somewhere in there, $2.3 million. Ambulance is a $409,000. This is actually a second ambulance. We already have one on order and hopefully it's already in the budget, but this is the other one, so, because right now we're running three ambulances. And then a police vehicle storage and training facility for $1.9 million. These one-time expenditures total $10 million. The remaining balance is still in excess of cash reserves, but is recommended to keep those funds until property and sales tax discussions at the state level become relatively stable. That could change with all the presentations that were tonight, so. So casino tax.
First, I'm going to go to Mr. Nickerson for a question. Before we get there, so your recommendation a couple slides back is not for a public safety bond at this point, just to spend a amount of cash?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll go there and I'll just pull this up.
The reason why we chose to go that route, or a recommendation?
So you probably haven't seen this spreadsheet in a while. So this is a general fund projection, a five-year projection, and hopefully you can see that on the monitors up there and people at home can see this. So for the '24 budget, it's the blue column. Beginning cash was $40.8 million. Here's the revenues and then the adjustment and then transfers in. So we have total revenues of $55 million. So, and on expenses, we have personnel services and then the adjustment, same with the operating expenses, our transfer is out for the year. And total expenses were $53,560,000. So at the end of '24, our ending cash is $42,386,149. Now, if we apply the fiscal policies for cash reserves at 25%, that's $13.4 million. So it leaves an excess of $29 million rounding. So that is a lot of excess cash to have on hand. And so for '25, we begin with our beginning cash of $42,300,000. Add in our revenues, projected revenues, our transfers in, $53,600,000 for total revenue. Personnel services, like I said, a 3% increase at $41 million. And operating expenses at $9.9 million. Transfers out, down a little bit for $2.7 million. And those transfers out is this right here. So... is this right here. So economic development, that's the LB eight forty program is nine hundred fifty thousand. Transit is our match, uh, for running the transit program, five hundred fifty-seven thousand. Capital equipment and this for computer replacement, uh, servers and such, uh, security is four hundred thousand dollars. Parking lot rehab for downtown, I believe we have, I think, what, seven parking lots and we got two done, I think. And so, and then golf course improvement is three hundred thousand. This is new money for the golf course. This does not include the rollover from twenty-four. So Sedona does have some rollover project money that's going into this as well. And then three hundred fifty thousand for permitting software. So this permitting software is a collaboration between Public Works, Building, Code Enforcement, Fire and Finance. They have one system, one online, very friendly citizen access, contractor access. They can get updates and so, um, uh, Keith and his team and Chad and his team and, and Corey and his team and Code Enforcement, Trent Hill, uh, we've been through this process, who, two, three months now. So we have finally picked one and so, uh, this is all coming together very nicely. So, uh, it's very important that the city would get this. So that's the three hundred fifty thousand for that. So that equals two point seven million. Total expenses of fifty-three million six. Now, if you take out, uh, the, the Fire Station Three ladder track ambulance and then a, and a police vehicle storage, it's ten million forty-two. Leaves us with thirty-two point three million, uh, ending cash. Cash reserves, twenty-five percent is thirteen-four and still have excess reserves of nineteen million dollars. So, so in this scenario, yes, I feel very comfortable using, um, excess cash. Especially, you know, the rest, I understand interest rates will come down, but they haven't yet. And so, you know, with borrowing, it's added cost. And so if you have the money and you can go ahead and pay it off, I, that, that is my recommendation. So here's our sales tax revenue, uh, for the last six years. And so you could see we're at a two percent higher than, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, or, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. And so the budget was seventeen-nine. Like I say, we'll be slightly under, uh, the seventeen-nine. And part of the reason, I think what would've been right on is in May, we had, uh, actually a refund, um, what is it, Invest Nebraska or some, Imagine Nebraska or something like that. Three hundred thirty thousand dollar refund. So it's, our refunds are usually in ten to fifteen thousand and this was three hundred thirty thousand dollars. So that makes a difference. But as you can see, our total sales tax, so we have a two thousand four sales tax to a two thousand eighteen sales tax. And so you're looking roughly ten million dollars that this money either goes to public safety equipment or it goes to roads and streets. Any questions on, on this? So, um, so in, in going down the line here, I used a two percent revenue growth. Uh, personal, uh, yeah, personnel expense growth at three percent. Some might think that might be a little conservative on that, but, you know, after this year and, you know, adding employees and, and we have union contracts and, and stuff like that, that we have made those adjustments. I feel very comfortable using a three percent, uh, personnel growth. So, and then a two percent operating. But at the end of, you know, five years, our cash, you know, yes, it has gone down, but you're still very comfortable and you're still at, uh, cash, you still have your cash reserves at twenty-five percent. You're not in the red. So, uh, it, it, it looks good. It really does. And like I said, once, you know, your Target, your hotels and the other things that, that are being built, put them on board is really gonna help our, our financial situation. Now, I just wanna put in here that if council's direction is to fund or add whatever presentations you heard tonight, you know, obviously there's general fund reserves that you could use or we can go back to the drawing board and figure something else out.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. So Pat, is the Hornaday, uh, funding in the budget at this point?
It is not. It is not. We, we just got that request like this week, so.
I mean, I would, I would like to see it come to council and what, whatever approval process we have. The other thing, I'd like to see that hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar reallocated from the perpetual maintenance trust fund back to, you know, another general fund, uh, cash source. But I'm, I'm grateful for what you've presented and how you presented it because it's made it very clear and understandable for me.
Oh, thanks.
The only thing I miss, I just, I still miss my budget book.
Yes.
For, for us old timers who are used to flipping pages, but, no, I mean, I still miss that. But, uh, no, I think it's been a, a good process. I think it's one that I, I've understood all the way along. And I think tonight we had a couple of great presentations that really brought to light some, you know, some of the deferred maintenance things that we have out there and we really need to address them, you know? And, and whatever, we have a point in our time today that we had, we didn't have ten years ago and we didn't have, we're not gonna have ten years from now, you know, that it's really, we're at that moment where we really need to start taking care of some of the things that we have been neglecting in the past. And, and I, I really wanna make sure that our, our, our focus is on getting some of those things caught up, although we have a, a limited bandwidth about how much we can do because our people are only able to do so much. But I really wanna focus on that with whatever resources we have. But thank you on the budget presentation, Pat.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sheard.
Can you pull up that long-range chart again? The, some of the other things we heard tonight had some long-range projects like the, uh, Island Oasis and he had in that budget seven hundred and fifty thousand a year. Is that what?
He did.
Is that in your projections here? Has that worked in?
It is not. So here's, so another idea that, that we have been tossing or thinking about is, so the Ryder Park Playground, as you mentioned, you know, with citizens, when they're putting their dollars in, it, it makes a big difference, right? So it's kind of a priority. And so with, with that one, thinking about this process is, so the Vets Complex loan, uh, will be paid off in twenty-seven, I believe. So what about refinancing that, wrapping Ryder Park into it? It's all recreational, uh, activities. Try to keep the payment level the same that already comes out of food and beverage. So, um, yeah, we'll jump to this food and beverage one, but if we can keep that payment the same, there's, it is not, you're not using cash reserves anywhere and we're maintaining that, that, uh, you know, revenue and expense ratio.
Mm-hmm. And you mentioned Ryder, there's Stolly, there is, uh, some of the trails projects. How much of that would have to come from us? I guess when I look at that and see in twenty-thirty, we're down to twelve million, I don't wanna say this like I would look at my own budget, but it means you have twelve million. You don't wanna go all the way down to the fifteen million, right, cash reserves? But is there an obligation we have to keep spinning that down?
No, not at all. Um, you don't have to at all. I will tell you, this is probably, it's not worst-case scenario, but it's close to that. Because every single year, more than likely, as in historically speaking, you're gonna have vacancy savings, you're gonna have operating savings. So that's part of that buildup of this cash. I will tell you that, uh, especially with the police department and fire department, when they had those, those open vacancies, we still budgeted for filling every, every vacancy. They didn't. And so when you have ten, eleven, twelve vacant, that adds, that's a million bucks. So that's, that's where that probably that most of the general fund cash reserves comes from.
The gentleman that spoke tonight about the, uh, the extra position for the parks.
You mentioned two, two positions.
Right, you, yeah, the one on the, the website management, I guess is how you'd do the other one, but the, the.
Kind of a sports director, I think.
Yeah, and the, and just brought up a good point about just as we grow, making sure that, you know, Todd's crew can maintain all those things. I think it's important, you know, how, my wife would yell at me if I didn't mention this. She's always angry when the sand burrs are on top of the trails when she's running and, and she tells me, I'm talking to my city council member right now, I want this taken care of. But I always think about, as we grow, we have an obligation to make sure that we do maintain it and we have the people to do it. I, I will be honest, I don't know where we are on that. Do we, do you feel like, um, while we're not always filling every position we have, do we have the room to add when we need that? Are there contingency positions put in ever that, you know, we did add a new neighborhood? That is a little bit more for us to maintain. We have more trails. Maybe we do need an extra person. Do we have that flexibility built in?
There is flexibility, yes.
Well, but, but for our process, so we had what, a request for fifteen FTEs this, this year? So we have, I mean, internally, we go through a process of trying to prioritize what is the most pressing because, you know, we, we always get requests for probably more. I would assume if we tried to fund all fifteen of those FTEs this year, uh, you might hand in your resignation because.
Yeah, you'd see a lot of red.
That twelve million would go down a little bit.
Yes.
So I mean, we, we do, we do go through that process though because a, a lot of people, a lot of department has make very valid, valid requests for more help, but internally, we try to prioritize. And we, we, we set on the ones that Mr. Brown just mentioned, uh, earlier in his presentation as to what we thought, uh, was fiscally prudent.
And I, I do appreciate that process to prioritize, uh, before it all comes to us because, uh, they all have presentations. They're all like, you know, sad puppies. Yep, let's give them what they want.
And I get that, yeah.
I appreciate you kinda filtering that. I just wonder when something like that comes, you know, those are valid points. And, and during the, uh, during the Good Life Campaign, I had people telling me some of those same things that we're not maintaining everything we have now. Pushed back a little bit on it, on a few of those situations because I do think we do a good job in this community of keeping it nice. But I, 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 there's some validity to some of it that we need to make sure we have people to do that. I guess my question is, do we have that flexibility when it arises and we say, oh, shoot, yep, we need to have somebody? There is a little bit of flexibility to fill a position that maybe we're not approving today or next month.
Yeah. Yes, there is. And, you know, just to kinda add to that, I mean, part of, so when Jerry was here and when we did the Island Oasis plan, I remember Ja- sitting with Jerry and Jerry specifically said to them, I'm, I want you to look at, when you look at this, how can we decrease the number of lifeguards, lifeguards that we need for this facility, you know, to, let's try to shrink what, you know, our operating of such a park and stuff like that. So, um, so it is discussed, especially with our consultants.
Thank you. This is, again, very helpful.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I wanted to point out that from Jack's comment is every company has peaks and valleys of needs and, and when you need an employer. The street department reminds me of one that we've added lane miles after lane miles after lane miles and they have the same number or even less. What they're doing is they're contracting out more and more. You know, they used to put in all the streets themselves and now we're doing more contracting out. And that's what we need to do in all, all the departments. I think when we have a need that, you know, like something to do in the trails, we just need to contract out a little more work. We've seen the contract work very successful with a golf course. We've seen the contract outwork very successful with a shooting park. I like the idea. These people are bringing in things that I haven't seen in a long time as a council member sitting in a budget session and I'm grateful for, for the depth that they go through and the efforts they put in and, and the enthusiasm they have about wanting a, a quality facility that they're working in. And I like hearing those things. So I appreciate going out like that.
Mr. Nickerson.
Pat, I think we're kinda sabotaging your presentation, but.
Hey, that's all good.
We're, we're actually in a good point where I wanted to bring something up and it's about FTEs and I appreciate the screening process that goes on, but I think sometimes we may, may not all use the same logic or approach when we're trying to determine that. But, but I think after the presentation tonight by Mr. Hanson, I think Todd deserves a chance to come and talk about, he was requesting one FTE, correct? Was that?
Yeah, yes, he requested one in the budget process.
Via text and he wondered who was texting him, but I, I said, Todd, stick around because I need to ask you a question. But I really think Todd needs to come up and let the council know why, you know, why do you need the FTE? Is it even gonna take care of anything that Mr. Hanson was talking about? Cause he, he had a lot to say and not that it wasn't legitimate, but what would that, what does that FTE need? Why do you need that? What can it do for you?
Well, here's puppy dog face or puppy dog eyes or however Jack said. So, yeah, I mean, clearly the park system is growing. Uh, we have, you know, there's more expectations. There's more trails, there's more facilities. So we did, uh, request an FTE this year. One of the items that we really would like to focus on is we'd like to get a, an irrigation specialist on staff. One of the things we've added is irrigation systems. Um, we've improved some of our irrigation systems and, and one of the things that we're finding is, um, we don't have probably contractors that can be very reactive for when there's a problem. So sometimes the wait is, is weeks or even months down the road to, to have somebody work on some. So we would like an irrigation specialist, but it's just not that though. It's, it's just all the other items that, that we have. But going back to your question about Derek, um, no, we probably would need a couple of staff, I mean, to honestly go back to where we were at. We, he actually referenced nineteen, or two thousand seventeen. We had two of our full-time FTEs were, um, cut from the city budget at that time. And that's when we stopped doing, striping the fields. We, you know, we, we're more facilitators now. We, we, we're reactive, not as proactive as we'd like to be as far as if a tournament comes to town. It's like, we have this great facility, but you really need to, you, you need to, you know, maintain it yourself. You need to, you know, chalk the field or whatever and that type of thing. And that's how, that's how we operate today. But to answer your question, we would know, one person would not do that. It would probably be a, a couple.
Right. But your request for your FT that you wanted this year has nothing to do with, with what he was asking?
It doesn't.
Yours is more of an irrigation specialist?
Just to keep up with demand of the park system itself and the facility growth that we've been going through. And quite honestly, the expectations, we, we really feel like the public is, has, has, um, grown, you know, their expectations have grown.
I will say though, last year, last year, Todd did request a, uh, what, sports coordinator, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we did have a, and, and again, this was probably one of the first years where we really have talked more about what all the requests are, you know, and I appreciate it. But, you know, last year we did have a, have a, an event coordinator position, for sports, um, in the budget, but it did not, it did not make the, uh, the final cut for the budget either that year, last year.
Last year. Okay. Well, let's go back to your irrigation specialist again. What are you, what do you want them to do?
Uh, just be, I mean, they're basically gonna manage our, I wanna say, whatever it is, sixty-some irrigation systems that we have and basically keep those, keep it running basically. And that would free up some of our other staff to do all the other things they do in the park system. So, so the, the, the position that we'd, we'd like to, uh, um, you know, add is an irrigation specialist.
That's not something that we've talked. That's not something that we've talked about, contracting some things out. That's not something you could have somebody hire for, hire a company to check out that and keep on top of.
It's not. It's really being more, more, be able to manage our systems and also be very reactive when there's an issue. And we have, we've not had a good experience having somebody hired to be reactive to, for us.
Okay, well, thanks for clarifying that, because I had no idea.
I need more clarification, though. We haven't actually contracted with an irrigation company, have we?
No, we do. We contracted irrigation, for example.
I mean, as opposed to just hiring them on an as-needed basis? Or have we contracted with an irrigation company?
Yeah, it's more of an as-needed, project-specific basis.
Okay. The next FTE question I'd like to at least present, and I don't know when we will vote on this type of stuff, or as a council, I don't know when these decisions need to be made.
This is good discussion right here, so.
Well, I think Celine made a very good presentation when she was here about trying to add to her staff. And I know she didn't make the cut either. But as I've taken a look at that, just wondering, five part-time, which means there's no, there's no benefits involved, so that's no cost there. This is five part-time people at a cost of $92,000, less than $2,000 a week. Helps the library meet their mission, to deliver on visitor requests of having more access to the library, longer hours. To me, I didn't, I didn't think that was an unreasonable request. And then I started looking, and I've asked the question. Pat's given me the numbers. So the question is, when we're talking about funding somebody, and we've got $29 million of excess cash here projected for a year, but you look at a budget as a whole, how is the library operated? And so Pat shared some numbers. Celine wasn't available to give me this, so she, so Pat gave it to me. But the three last fiscal years in a row, they've operated at a, they've operated under budget anywhere from $64,000 to $191,000. So when we're looking at a potential $92,000 increase for part-time people that will help them meet their mission, to me, it seemed like, as a whole, budget as a whole, they can cover that. She also offered up some opportunities, if we would consider it, she would try to offset that. And I don't know what that would be, but just a regular budget operation, they've been able to maintain as low as $64,000, as high as $191,000. I think it's a valid discussion to have as a council, whether we think that's something that, that we should look at, helping our library expand. And if we don't have consensus, I think it's still a good item that we would just need to vote up or down. So where I know that we gave it at least a good discussion and debate before we made that decision. And I don't think tonight's the night, because we're missing three people. But we do need to, I would at least like to have that offered up down the road here in the next week or two, whenever, whenever these discussions have to be finalized.
So timeline. So we have August 27th, a regular city council meeting. That really is kind of the only opportunity, because September 3rd, we're going to open the hearing for the budget. And then September 10th is when we hopefully have at least eight members here to finalize the budget, to pass the budget ordinance.
Well, do we have to have a separate section for budget discussion in our formal meeting next week? Or is, can it just be part of the overall discussion? How's that all tie together, as we're wrapping this whole budget thing up with a regular scheduled meeting?
I think I would have to call on Carrie, but I think, we, what we used to do is actually have, and if you recall, a study session and a council meeting in the same evening. So if we, if you decide, hey, we want to talk about this, we could, when the city council meeting adjourns, then we move to a study session. So I don't know, I, that's what we used to do. I don't know if, if we can still do it, or what the procedures are for that.
We could also just add it as an agenda item to the regular meeting as well, if that's easier, that discussion and decision on...
With no action item?
Or, yeah, either way, we could do it with or without.
Like a presentation of some sort?
Yeah. If we just want a discussion, you could put it under the discussion section. If you want an action item with it, we could put it there.
You know, if, if, if the council desires to do that, I would recommend next Tuesday.
And Mr. Brown, I got the question. Is September 3rd the meeting that the council votes on the budget?
That's just to open the hearing for the budget. We have to have a separate meeting for state statutes. No, it's just opening. It's September 10th is when you vote on the budget.
Thank you.
Well, then going back to my question, though, do I need to file a formal request this week for that agenda item?
I'm treating what you said as a request.
Okay, well, sometimes the rules have changed.
I'm going to, but I want to be fair to all department heads. We'll bring all, all FTE requests before the council, because...
That sounds fair, too, yes. Because there's only a few, well, I don't know, a few, that's not going to count the police, because they've already been decided, right, for the most part?
No, I don't, there hasn't been a formal decision on the budget, so.
No.
So I think, I want to be fair to all department heads, and we have requests for 15. And if you had a sports marketing person, that's probably 16 FTEs. So people have, in my view, department heads have a right to be heard, so. This will be for next week.
Yes, this would be for the 27th. No, September 10th. That's just to open the hearing. This is when, we come at 6 o'clock, I think 6 o'clock, and we open the bud, the budget, the hearing, and then we adjourn, and then we bring it back on the 10th to, to officially vote on it and to pass the ordinance.
So we don't do anything on the 3rd, other than open a meeting and close it?
That is correct.
We open a meeting in case anybody from the public wants to comment.
Gotcha. That's public hearing. Gotcha, gotcha.
Our window is August 27th, and we have some council members already that may not be here. But we'll just have to do with what we've got. So we'd have six council members here that night.
I, I don't, I don't know if we would, so. Because I, I, more than likely, three are gone, so.
Well, maybe I don't make an issue of that. Why don't we just leave the status quo as it is? People have, have pretty well agreed to what we've agreed to, from what we understand. So I don't want to muddy it up, and especially want six people making the decision for 10. I just don't think that's, that's fair at that point. So I'll drop my, my request, and we'll just move on, and maybe speak of it next year.
Casino tax. So I know council, council member Bethany had asked on if there was some sort of, yes, not demographics, but, you know, who's inside of Grand Island, who's outside, who's, you know, spending their money casino. They are very tight-lipped about their analysis. So, I'm still trying. So as soon as I get that, I will let everyone know. So fiscal year '24 casino tax projected revenues are $830,000. We had budgeted $750. It's 10% over budget.
Mr. Hawsey has a question.
Sorry for interrupting. A question on the casino tax. Is there any way to separate those funds so that we could specifically earmark them for something, you know, special, as opposed to just dropping them into the big black hole called the general fund?
Big black hole is helping pay FTEs, so.
I just thought, because it's a new revenue source.
It is. And we can.
And I've had some questions about, are you using it for X, Ys? You know, somebody's asking me these things, and I, I can't even tell them where it goes. And I think if we, if the council somehow has the ability to direct whatever we're doing with it, it just gives me some accountability to the taxpayers. Just, just, that's one of my thoughts from people that ask me, because I can't tell them where it goes, other than...
I could tell you this. This, and so, so the casino with a tax, on my dashboards, if I can remember correctly, I believe they tax 20% or it's 80%. Anyway, there's 70% of that tax that goes to property tax relief, right? And then the city receives the 12.5%. I will tell you, without this tax, this is property tax relief for Grand Island, because if we didn't have this money in the general fund, your property taxes would probably increase. So, so in essence, it is property tax relief.
And that might be the story, but then we just need to tell that story. We just, we don't really have it, you know, as a, we would have had to raise property taxes but for?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So with the hotel casino opening in February, in the anticipation of it, projected revenues that are 1.2 million. So hopefully, that's low. These, like I said, these funds are currently part of the general fund. It is for general governmental services. So food and beverage, sorry that this slide's a little busy, but the revenue projection for '24 is 3.2 million. It's 4% higher than '24 budget revenues. This revenue source has gone up every year. It's incredible. Projected '24 expenditures are 4.2 million. Year-to-year expenditures out of the, out of the food, out of the food and beverage tax include Husker Harvest Days of $200,000. We're in year five of 10, so we, we're halfway marked there. Since the state fair is here, we do a 10% match for lottery, which goes back to the state. It's $575,000 approximately a year. Grow Grand Island, that contract is actually ending this year. I believe there's an extension on that for one year, I believe. Could, I don't know, could be coming to council. Anyway, I'm budgeting for it. $500,000. Vets Complex debt payment, as I spoke earlier about this debt, maybe refinancing and doing the Ryder Park with that. Other expenditures, $1,000, dismissal line is expenditures that would come up.
Can I interrupt briefly? Mr. Nickerson has a question.
Yep.
Talking about the lottery match, I remember when that used to be in the $400,000 range. So what, what determines that number? You say 10% due to state fair being held in Grand Island, but what takes it from the 400 to the 575? What's...
People playing the lottery. More people are playing lottery. So if they play more, it's the higher, and then we have to, we have to match it to 10%.
Okay. So, so it's, it's literally based on lottery?
It is. It really is.
I guess I never made that connection. I always, it's like...
The more they play, the more we pay.
Lucky for us. All right, thanks.
The remaining funds is approximately 1.2 million a year is left over for parks projects. Fiscal year '25 budget revenues are 3.3 million, which is 7.6% higher than '24 budget revenues. In addition to the above expenditures, 3.5 million would be available for projects due to spending down the cash reserves, as I mentioned earlier. The Keno Funds, projected '24 funds from Keno proceeds is $326,000, with projected '24 expenditures of $718,265. For fiscal year '25, budget revenues are at $340,000, with budget expenditures of $954, again, spending down cash reserves. And that is the end of my presentation.
Doesn't look like there's any questions. We have completed our agenda. Thanks to everybody who participated.
When do we retire the Heartland Event Center bonds? When do we retire the Event Center bonds?
September of '24. Yeah.
Four payments left.
So, yeah, yeah, that's...
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
No plan to, what we're doing next.
Does anybody know what we're going to do with it?